We're not live on YouTube.
And and we're on our website.
Alrighty, good morning and welcome to this morning's Queens Borough President Land Use Public Hearing. This hearing is being livestreamed on www queensbp.org. This hearing will be held virtually pursuant to reenacting inaction provisions in the Open Meetings Law, permitting permitting fully virtual meetings until July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, which is my father's birthday. For those who wish to testify and haven't already pre-registered to do so, please visit www queensbp.org/landuse. If you need assistance, please call our office at seven one eight two eight six two eight six zero, or email planning2@queensbp.org, planning2@queensbp.org. One of our planning staff will assist you. Please note your opportunity to speak will follow those who are pre-registered. Written testimony is welcome from those who are unable to testify. All written testimony must be received by five P M. today and may be submitted by email to vgarvey@queensbp.org or by conventional mail sent to the office of the Queens Borough President at one twenty dash fifty-five Queens Boulevard, room two two six Q Gardens, New York, one one four two four. I am joined by my planning director and staff, Vicky Garvey, Lisa Atkins, Sola Alu-Sunday, and Malik Sanders. Lisa, please review how this hearing will proceed.
Good morning and welcome to this land use public hearing. Excuse me. Hearing, the public hearing shall be conducted in the following manner. The applicant will be called to give a description of the zoning action requested, an explanation of the proposed project, and respond to any questions from the chair. The floor will then be open for public speakers. Each speaker will have three minutes. A signal will be heard and notice will be will be displayed when the three minutes have passed. When you are called, please identify yourself for the record, and if you are formally speaking as a representative or a member of a group, the calendar number or application that you are speaking about, and whether you are for or against the item, then you may begin your testimony. At the discretion of the chair, if there are a large number of speakers on any particular item, it may be put on second call. Speakers for and against that item may also be called to testify in an alternating basis. Please note that in order to testify at this virtual hearing, you must keep your camera on during your testimony and display your name accurately on Zoom. If at any point you have any technical issues, please let our planning staff know in the chat and we will assist you. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you, Lisa. You've just been advised on the proceedings of this hearing and how it will be conducted. Please keep your comments focused on the application you are speaking about. Please stay within the allotted three minutes, and when you hear the signal, please wrap up and finish your comments. The chair, which is I, reserves the right to ask speakers for clarifications or further information regarding the application or comments. With that being said, Lisa, please call our first calendar item.
Calendar item number one, U L R P two two zero one three three Z M Q. The applicant is Dr. Robert Thomas, affected community board number five. Applicant, please begin.
Hi, good morning. My name is Amanda Iannotti from Sheldon Mobile P C here to present the seventy-eight forty-six Metropolitan Avenue zoning. As you see on the screen, I am joined by the applicant, Dr. Robert Thomas, as well as the project architect, to answer any questions at the conclusion of the presentation. Here's the project summary and proposed development. This is a zoning map amendment to rezone seventy-eight forty-six and seventy-eight forty-four Metropolitan Avenue, block three seven seven six lots thirty and thirty-one from an R five zoning district to an R five D C two-three zoning district. The proposed zoning map amendment will facilitate the enlargement of the existing one-story building located at seventy-eight forty-six Metropolitan Avenue with two additional stories and two dwelling units, and it will bring the existing legal non-conforming ground floor use group six veterinary medicine office into conformance. The applicant anticipates staff of the existing veterinary practice to occupy the two new residential units above the existing ground floor medical practice. The proposed development will have a total floor area of approximately five thousand square feet, about one point nine four F A R, including about twenty-five hundred square feet of residential use and twenty-five hundred square feet of the existing commercial commercial use. The proposed rezoning will also bring the existing legal non-conforming and non-compliant building located on lot thirty into conformance and compliance. Here's the zoning map. You can see the area, the proposed project area circled in the big black circle. I'll note that this is the only block frontage on Metropolitan and surrounding area that does not have a commercial overlay. It's just R five. Here's the tax map showing the two lots in question a little closer. The proposed development site is in red with the adjacent building also being rezoned next door. The area map shows the commercial character of Metropolitan Avenue a little bit closer again. You can see there is no commercial overlay on this block, but there are several commercial uses, including the two that will be legalized by adding the commercial overlay here. Here's some pictures of the surrounding area. This is the side street of seventy-ninth Street of the proposed development site. You can see the one-story animal clinic there. Here's a view from the front. The blue awning again is the building in question. And then there you can see the three-story building next door that is also within the project area with the ground floor commercial use, a medical office, and two residential units above. Again, that building is non-conforming and non-compliant and will be brought into conformance and compliance with this rezoning application. Architectural plans follow showing the proposed two-story enlargement. I will skip a couple of pages. Here's the site plan. You can see the existing one-story building with the proposed two-story addition above. It's set back from Metropolitan Avenue, approximately of forty feet to fifty-five feet. This is the ground floor animal office floor plan. And then the proposed second and third floor units above. Elevation from seventy-nine and an elevation from Metropolitan. And here are some renderings of what it would look like from the street with the addition. You can see the two-story, the additional two stories are pulled back from Metropolitan Avenue. Again, from the side here, you can see that it actually does not block any of the existing windows on the adjacent building. And that is, that's all. That concludes my presentation. And again, I'm joined by the applicant, project architect, if you have any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. Few questions. So what sustainable measures are you considering in construction energy systems and/or materials? And are you utilizing your roof for anything? Like solar?
So I'm joined by the project architects, Spiro. Would you be able to answer any of those sustainability questions?
Yes. Hi, my name is Spiro Bazegos. I'm with H two M Architects and Engineers, and we're looking into efficient H T C units. If we may investigate a solar component, but if we don't do a solar component, we'll definitely have the white roof as required by code currently.
My law.
By law, sorry, by law. Thank you for the correction. Other than that, you know, some of the interiors, well, we're looking at sustainable interior elements, low V O C paints, you know, sustainable furniture, things of that nature.
What's the unit count here?
Two.
Two.
Two unit counts. And you'll be required to, you won't be required to do M I H?
No.
No, right, okay. And are you, are you looking at any other things outside of it from an affordable standpoint?
No, the units are actually going to be occupied by employees of the veterinary practice. Close to the, you know, animals in need or or animals that have long-term care. So this has been something that the applicant, Robert Thomas, has been wanting to do for a while to just better support his animals in the clinic. And that's really the purpose of the units.
Okay, and tell me about your M W B E local and union labor hiring. Will you consider any of the three? And just want to hear about what you're doing around M W B E.
Spiro, do you have any response regarding local hiring or choice of contractor yet?
Not yet, because we haven't, you know, we haven't gotten to that level of construction detail. So we don't know what the and who's going to be bidding on this project. Obviously, it's a, it's a private, it's not a public contract. But, you know, we always try to get firms to bid on this that have a W N B E or veterans that that are employed either by the G C or by their subs.
And let me just add, although it is a private application, you know, the rezoning is a benefit. So definitely want to hear, and I haven't heard any M W B E hiring goals as well. Do you have any?
As far as H two M?
No.
As far as the construction?
Yeah, yes, both.
We haven't put any W, any of those goals set forth in in the contract for construction as of yet, but we'll certainly consider it when we put the R F P out for bid.
So let me just add that, you know, normally my standard is minimum thirty percent. And then on local hiring also, and I really do suggest as well that you figure out a community organization to work with on local hiring goals in these M W B E goals. And I would really suggest you do that before we make a recommendation. So really tightening up on that.
We'll do that.
Yeah, and then can you walk me through the street vendor issues on the site from start to finish? Were there any street vendor issues I need to be aware of?
Street vendor?
Yeah.
No.
No, okay. And, okay, and and are you considering, and you're not considering adding any more community facility space? Or really just, this is going to be dedicated?
Okay. That's it.
All right, I think, I think those are my questions, Vicky. I don't know if you have any more?
No, I'm all set.
You're all set? Alrighty, thank you. Do we have any members of the public who wish to testify on this issue?
Yes, we do. Our, our first speaker is Celia Maldonado, followed by Cerise Holman and Lisa McLaren.
Alrighty, unmute yourselves.
I just want to quickly clarify as we bring folks in as panelists that this would be on the item seventy-eight dash forty-six Metropolitan Avenue rezoning.
Righty, do you want to call the individuals who wish to testify on this issue again? Do we have them?
Celia Maldonado, Cerise Holman, and Lisa McLaren.
Do we see them?
At this moment, I do not see them in the attendee list.
Okay, there are two more, John Clausman and Carl Alston.
And please excuse the delay. There are a voluminous number of speakers, so we're just taking our time scrolling through.
Okay. And this is not on innovation. This first application is Metropolitan Avenue.
Correct.
I'm going to be able to testify on innovation until we hear innovation. All right. Do we see?
Have we promoted the attendees to panelists?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Alrighty, want to trot it one more time, then we got to move on.
John Clausman is in the, in the room. He's being promoted.
Alrighty, I will just re-clarify. So if you, if you're unable to make testimony on this, you can submit your testimony to vgarvey@queensbp.org or send your testimony by conventional mail Queens Borough, to the Queens Borough President's office at one twenty dash fifty-five Queens Boulevard, room two two six Q Gardens, New York, one one four two four. So I'm going to have to move on because we have a busy day if they're not testifying. But that being said, I'm going to close this calendar item and we'll move on to the next calendar. Lisa, please call.
Certainly. Calendar items number two and three are related items. U L R P number two two zero one six nine Z M Q and U L R P number N two two one seven zero Z R Q. The applicant Crescent Street Associates LLC, affected community board number one. Applicant, please begin.
Hi, good morning, Borough President Richards, and I almost want to call you Chair Richards because I think the last time I was before you was when you were Chair of the Zoning and Franchise Subcommittee. A couple of years back, it's good to see you again, albeit virtually, and good to see you all as well. Dan Eggers from Greenberg.
You muted yourself.
Sorry about that. Good morning, Dan Eggers, Land Use Attorney from Greenberg Charred. Good to see you again, Borough President Richards. I almost want to call you Chair Richards because I think the last time I was before you was when you were the Chair of the Zoning and Franchise Subcommittee. But it's good to see you again and good to see you virtually as people seem to still be seeing each other these days. And good to see you all as well. Let me begin sharing my screen here. Did that work? Can you see the presentation? Yes. Okay, excellent. So we're very excited to present to you this truly mixed-use project. We represent the Rosenwach Group specifically and affiliate Crescent Street Associates LLC, the owner of forty dash twenty-five Crescent Street. And as you may know, the Rosenwach Group is a major supplier of water, storage tanks and towers, cooling products and services for the tri-state area, and they have been for decades. The property was previously a fabrication site for the Rosenwachs before it moved its fabrication activities elsewhere because of changing traffic patterns around Queens Plaza, adversely affecting the ability of tractor-trailers to access the site. Their water tower and tank business has been operating in New York City since the eighteen hundreds, and the rezoning would in part allow their business to retain a presence in the neighborhood in Long Island City and retain jobs while having their operations at this location to occupy a more modern facility. That's the presentation here. So this is an application for rezoning from an M one two R five B and M one two R five D zoning districts to an M one two R six A district within the existing Dutch Kill sub-district of the Long Island City Mixed Use District. A mandatory inclusionary housing area would also be mapped over the rezoned area. And this would facilitate a seven-story mixed-use building with about a hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of floor area at forty dash twenty-five Crescent Street. Forty dash twenty-five Crescent is on the block bounded by fortieth and forty-first avenues and Crescent Street and Twenty-seventh Street. Specifically, the proposed rezoned area would be the portion of the block a hundred feet north of Forty-first Avenue and eighty feet south of Fortieth Avenue, which are now M one two R five B and M one two R five D zoning districts. This would extend the existing M one two R six A district that's immediately south this area north to within eighty feet of Fortieth Avenue. The district would continue, would continue to serve as a transition with respect to height and density from the higher density blocks to the south to the adjacent M one two R five B and M one two R five D districts. In addition to forty dash twenty-five Crescent Street, six smaller lots are part of the proposed rezoned area. Four of these are for vehicle storage. One has a three-story residential building, and one has a nine-story hotel, as are small portions of six other lots. Here is an aerial image of the site and the proposed rezoned area. The site is an approximately forty-five thousand square foot lot with about two hundred and fifty-five feet of frontage on Crescent and two hundred feet of frontage on Twenty-seventh Street. The site now has four one-story buildings used as office space for Orkin, the exterminating service facility where the owner stores and tests its water storage and cooling tower products and a parking lot. And the existing conditions are shown in these street-level photos. Now here's the original site plan of the proposed development. As you can see, there would be office space, manufacturing and residential uses with a courtyard. Now, there were concerns raised at the community board regarding vehicular drop-off and loading and the, and picking up and picking up of residents and people getting out of their cars, especially with respect to Crescent Street where there's a dedicated bike lane. So we have proposed, or and we're looking into a few solutions here. And the fact that this is a through-block site does give us some flexibility with respect to drop-offs and loadings. And one solution here that we are actively working on through city planning and discussions with D O T is to have a loading zone on the Twenty-seventh Street frontage. There would be signage posted by the building directing all deliveries for the building to be taken to the Twenty-seventh Street side. And if there are deliveries for residents in the Crescent Street portion of the building, they would be brought, the deliveries would be brought through the lobby on Twessin, on on Twenty-seventh Street through a breezeway, which is shown in the orange, to the lobby on on Crescent Street. And this would be done so that vehicular drop-offs and pickups would be directed towards Twenty-seventh Street and away from Crescent Street. As part of the conversations with D O T, we're working to ensure that vehicular and bike traffic is maintained during construction of the building. And D O T, we are told, does not currently have any major concerns regarding the building in relation to the bike lane after, after opening. And discussions with D O T with respect to this point will, will be ongoing. Here are the details of the building. There would be a total of approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of floor area. That's three point nine F A R, which five thousand square feet would be in commercial use and twelve thousand square feet would be in manufacturing use. And a hundred and fifty-eight thousand square feet, that's three point five F A R, would be residential. Here with M I H up to three point six F A R is permitted. And there's an additional point four F A R allowed for designated permitted industrial uses for a total of four point zero F A R allowed. Sorry, the commercial use would be office space, and the manufacturing use would be light industrial use by the owner's pipe fitting operations. So this action would, as mentioned at the beginning, among other things, preserve industrial jobs. Of the residential, about thirty-nine thousand five hundred square feet would be permanently affordable under M I H option one, which requires at least twenty-five percent of the residential floor area be affordable to households with incomes not exceeding sixty percent A M I. And of that twenty-five percent, ten percent cannot exceed forty percent A M I. So this translates to approximately two hundred and thirty-three units, of which sixty would be permanently affordable. And with respect to the unit mix, again, we have not designed our building. This is still in the conceptual phase, whereas we wouldn't be so presumptuous as to assume approval of the rezoning so that would enable a specific building. But the initial unit mix that we had in mind was nineteen percent twos and three bedrooms. And in response to the community board asking for a greater number of larger units, currently, the applicant is proposing forty percent two and three-bedroom units. The building would have a sixty-five-story, sixty-five-foot, six-story base site and set back fifteen feet from each street and have a total height of seventy-five feet of seven stories, which is less than the total maximum height of eighty-five feet or eight stories that's permitted. A portion of the building fronting on Crescent Street would be fifty-five feet, which is the portion within twenty-five feet of the adjacent M one two R five D district that's to the north of the site. A hundred and eighteen parking spaces, which is the amount required by zoning, would be provided in the cellar. Of these, eighty-eight would be for residents and thirty would be for the commercial and manufacturing uses. That's eighteen for the commercial, twelve for the manufacturing, and access to buildings parking, as mentioned, would be on Twenty-seventh Street. And loading for the manufacturing use would be on Crescent. There is a land use diagram showing the proposed building in context. And here we have some, some views of the proposed building from the street. As you can see, the new building would create a nearly continuous street wall along each of the site's frontages. And here are renderings of the building. Again, the, the design has not been finalized, but we wanted to show a concept that we have in mind at this point to give, to give everyone an idea as to the building that that could be built here if the rezoning were approved. And again, it's good to be with you again. Thank you, and we welcome your questions.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Take me through. So let's go through the affordability quick. So you're doing M I H option one, which I'm very happy you're doing. Are you looking for to entertain any subsidy from the city or or any more affordable units outside of the twenty-five at sixty?
So that's, that's not something we we've looked into at this, at this point. It's something that that we're open to considering, and we we could look, look into potential subsidies to increase the affordability, but we haven't done that at this, at this time.
Okay, so you're going to have a conversation with H P D?
We can do that.
Take me through, what is your commitment on M W B E local hiring and also union labor hiring?
So the, the owner intends to hire a general contractor for the project. They've not hired a general contractor yet. As, as mentioned, the, the ownership has been in the area for decades. So hiring local and keeping jobs in the community is something that they understand and appreciate the importance of. But it's not something that we've looked, looked into at this time. But we certainly have heard your comments to the other applicant, and we, we will look further into what commitments we can make regarding M W B E hiring.
Alrighty, so I'm going to give you the same. Everybody who testifies here, get used to the same question. So thirty percent local hiring goal, a partnership with the local community-based organization. I would really suggest that happen before recommendation. And then also, I didn't hear anything. Are you working with, are you entertaining building service workers or any other labor agents on this project?
So we've not, we've not had those conversations yet with thirty-two B J. It's something that we would certainly entertain, and we're, we're happy to have those, those conversations.
I would suggest that happen very soon. And then on M W B E procurement?
Exactly. We, we heard what you said regarding thirty percent, and that's, that's something that we will look further into and will, will do our best to accommodate, yes.
And then on the, the local hiring goals, and we, we will request all of these things in writing, of course. So I'm assuming you agree, you will agree on it and get that to us in writing. And then also, we And get that to us in writing. And then also, we would love to see a reporting mechanism on the local jobs. So for instance, in the in the neighborhood, you have Queensbridge, you have Ravenswood, you have Astoria Houses. And perhaps, you know, whatever C B O you figure out you can work with in conjunction, you would have them, you know, make best due efforts to ensure that they are working with the developments and perhaps also reporting on on the local hires as well. So that's something we're gonna look towards and wanna see in writing, certainly. I saw your green, your green roof features. Can you just go into that a little bit?
Sure, sure. And for that, I'll turn it over to the project architect, Jean Kaufman and Nora Fernandez. Gina, Nora?
Yeah, we have, this is Jean Kaufman. So we have a large roof area and we have it on on both streets, on Crescent and on Twenty-seventh Street, because the two portions are separated. And so we have ample opportunity and we're planning for a green roof, certainly on one of the sides and possibly on the second.
Okay, so you're just entertaining a green roof, no solar, no other features on it?
We're looking for the the green roof feature.
Okay. And take me through, so there was a hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of, was that community facility or what? Or that was the?
There's no community facility. The the vast majority is residential. And then there's twelve thousand square feet of manufacturing for the Rosenwald business and about five thousand square feet of commercial.
And can you tell me why there's no community facility space included?
The, I mean, the project's mostly residential and what would be, let's say, there's no community facility additional floor area, but there is additional floor area for the the manufacturing use. And so it's the intention is to maintain their presence on the property. As Dan mentioned, they've been there for a century and to preserve the the jobs which are there existing.
And in lieu of that, would you consider a courtyard?
We we have a courtyard, yeah.
And your plans are public and it is publicly accessible, correct?
The courtyard is for all of the people living in the project.
There was a street vendor issue here, I think, on the site. Can you take me through that from start to finish?
Sure. And and we we have discussed this with the with the community board. The the situation was was this, these, there was a lease between the the ownership and, for lack of a better word, a a middleman. And this this middleman or intermediary provided space for these these street vendors to store their 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 equipment, their their trucks, their their carts. And there were terrible issues with this intermediary regarding non-payment and not providing services, not providing services that they were supposed to with respect to ownership and also unfortunately not providing services to the street vendors. The ownership had no issue with the street vendors themselves. It was unfortunate that that there was this intermediary that that was a was a bad actor. And the the intermediary vacated. And the street vendors followed the intermediary to a a new location, which I'm told is on Thirteenth Street north of the bridge, where they, where the street vendors can now store their their carts and trucks. So to to be clear, there wasn't any issue with the street vendors themselves. And the relocation did not impact their ability to to provide services, because this is really it's storage for their their trucks and their carts, I'm told. So it was unfortunate, but but they found it. They found a new location.
Any, so just purely manufacturing space on the site, no retail?
Initially, the, and again, the building hasn't been fully designed. The initial programming was was retail, but upon further thought, ownership believes that, given the nature of this of the streets here, retail is probably not the best the best use here. And that what they now have in mind is office space, which they may very well use for themselves in connection with the the manufacturing use that they're keeping on on site here.
So what I, so one of the things I I like is community facility space. I think it's good for, one, the the residents who could live here, who possibly will live here. And then also, you know, there are, I'm sure, community-based organizations that need space in this neighborhood. So I would really suggest us looking at some community facility space, especially if you're not gonna do the retail. Any comments, questions or concerns on that?
That's 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 something that that we'll 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 look into. We we hear what you're saying, yes.
Okay. Alrighty, I think I, Vicki, you had, and I saw you had tree. One of the things I I noticed, there was a lack of trees on the street. So you do, you will do some plantings outside the building as well.
There 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 will be, there will be street trees, yes.
Okay. And then are you entertaining a non-smoking option in this building?
I don't know if that's something we've we've thought about yet. Has has anyone on the team given that thought? We probably haven't at this point, no.
Alrighty, something that, you know, is important to me. And, you know, clean air is important for everyone. And matter of fact, our Borough Board just passed a resolution promoting smoke-free housing. So something to look into and would love an answer on that as we move through. And you can get back to Vicki on that. Vicki, any other last questions, comments or concerns of staff on this application?
I am all set. You you asked all the relevant questions, so thank you.
Okay. All right. With that being said, are there any members of the public who would testify on this item, forty dash twenty-five Crescent Street? Do we have any people signed up?
We have a few registered speakers for this item, beginning with Ismael Donato. Followed by Cerise Holman. Lisa McLaren. And John Clausman. We're we're attempting to promote Mr. Clausman again. We also have registered Carl Alston. And George.
And let me just let folks know, this is not for testimony on innovation. This is for, we're getting to that item next, so I just wanna make sure we're clarifying. Alrighty.
Okay, Gil Lopez.
Do you see them in the waiting room?
Will you give me direction?
Yes, so Carl Alston is there. I'm trying to get him to unmute.
Okay, Carl, you must unmute. We are trying to promote you. And turn on your camera, please.
I see, I see Carl. Alrighty, so unmute yourself, Carl.
We get to do that now. Hold on a second.
You're testifying on forty twenty-five Crescent.
No, 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 Mr. Rich, it's good to see you. That was me in the red van yesterday. Beat me at your Vernon Boulevard. I'm testifying on Innovation Queen, so. But yeah, but that was me.
We're gonna mute you and then we're gonna come back to you will testify in the next, after this application is closed. So everybody that this is for forty dash twenty-five Crescent Street.
Thank you so much, Mr.
No problem. We'll see you in a few.
Okay, we also have registered Sarah Mudind. And Demi Amidianu. Demi is being promoted. No, she might be for Innovation Queens.
We know everybody's anxious to get to innovation. We're getting to it next.
Yeah, the issue is that a few folks seem to have registered for both items, so that's why we're just doing our due diligence.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Followed by Maria Papagenu.
Papa Georgiou, I'm here.
I'm sorry.
All right, Maria, you're testifying on forty dash twenty-five Crescent, correct?
Correct.
Okay, you may proceed.
Cool. Yes, I don't want this building to be built. I don't want any of Astoria or Queens to be rezoned. It is gentrification. We already have high enough rents. The apartments that they're building that are affordable are not gonna be enough. The market rate apartments that they have are gonna be way too high. It's gonna increase the rent in the surrounding areas. I hear that they have absolutely no place for anyone that doesn't live in this building, which will be a luxury gentrifier building. It's not gonna add anything to the community except for the people that are coming in. And those people are not gonna be people that have lived here their whole lives like me, who are gonna get pushed out by my rent going up. And we've seen this happen over and over to all these different neighborhoods in New York. And I wonder why I have to sit here during my workday and explain to grown adults that it is bad to gentrify neighborhoods, that people suffer. People that are already in marginalized communities suffer even more when you gentrify. And we're already a gentrified neighborhood here in Astoria. It's really, really difficult to hear that people keep wanting to make these projects and they claim that it's affordable. It is so frustrating. It feels like it's never gonna stop. We saw it happen to so many neighborhoods in Brooklyn. The rent in Manhattan has gone up like thirty percent since last year alone. All those people that are trying to exit us Manhattan are gonna try to come here. And people are gonna have more competition because of those tenants looking for housing. And it doesn't matter how many houses we build here in Astoria. The rent is never going to be competitive enough, because we have places like Manhattan that are raising the rent prices so, so high. It's never going to lead to lower rents. I know that was something that people said, like, we need more housing. No, not this kind of housing, not housing that is going to be small, luxury and unaffordable for most people that live in this community. And not only that, the housing isn't gonna be good for people that are already here, that I wouldn't wanna move in there, for example, like people in my neighborhood won't be able to or wouldn't want to move in there. Not only that, it's also that the existence of a building like this is going to make our lives that are already difficult more difficult. So I am very against this building. I don't care, Jean Kaufman. I don't care the other guy. I don't believe him at all. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Righty, we're gonna ask folks testifying forty twenty-five Crescent. We're not up to Innovation Queen yet, okay? Alrighty, we're gonna go to the next individual to testify.
Next registered speaker, Christina Chase. Followed by Angelina Mamendovo.
My name is Christina Chase and I'm here today as Vice President of the Ravenswood Residential Association and a member of Justice for All Coalition. Above all, I am a longtime resident of Western Queens who's greatly concerned about the gentrification of my neighborhood. Private affordable housing initiatives have distracted from public housing investment and have favored private developers more than the people of New York City. These initiatives are not inclusive of extremely low-income families and disregard many former residents. I think Donovan had wonderful questions, but I'm not satisfied with the answers. I grew up in Queensbridge as a kid and I know that private development like this has no interest in how we can and will, excuse me, how this can and will impact the larger neighborhood. Only sixty out of over two hundred units at sixty percent A M I. This is luxury housing. The median income of NITI residents is below thirty thousand. We and many like us cannot access this space. This is an issue of economic, racial and disability justice. This proposal will disrupt, disturb and displace many of us who comprise this community, including myself. There has been no outreach to public housing residents nor considerable community input in this plan. Moreover, this will impact the small businesses that are striving to sustain itself as well as create themselves right now. I'll save my, the rest of my comments for Innovation Queens, but I just hope that you hear us, sorry that.
So so what I'm saying is, okay, so we're gonna ask folks to really, so you're testifying on, this is on Crescent.
This is for, yes.
Okay, got it.
Which is why I'm speaking about the units.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, it's it's also, you know, related in terms of pushing us out.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
And Dan, do you wanna go through? So and and actually, you should break down the twenty-five at sixty. Can you break down what the the A M Is are on those units?
Right, so the bands haven't been selected yet. They will be when we're at the stage of negotiating the regulatory agreement with H P D. But I I do wanna point out that in M I H option one, there is a requirement that ten percent be affordable at forty percent A M I. And it's set by by formula. And that the income limits, for instance, for a studio at forty percent A M I is thirty-seven thousand dollars a year. I I appreciate that there are many comments here regarding the the affordability. But I I I do wanna point out that between M I H option one and option two, this is the lower level of the of the two, and that there is a, there is a band, a required band in the M I H option one at forty percent A M I.
And you did speak on, you're speaking to H P D, so are you entertaining going into, or are you, which program are you entertaining with them?
So so.
Or clarify that.
So right, so so to clarify, we've not had those conversations with H P D yet, but we're certainly hearing the comments that are made regarding affordability. And when we, when the time comes for us to speak to H P D, if this, you know, if this project is approved, as of as of now, there's 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 no project, right? We we will discuss with them the the A M I levels.
Alrighty, we'll head to the next individual to testify.
Angelina Mamendovo. She's being promoted. She is promoted. Please.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning to everybody. And I'm sorry, I'm not all that strong in English, but I would like to say that I love Astoria and I would like to represent who love Astoria like me. Because it's something like Chelsea for the Monathan. And it's not, how I can say? Astoria have character. Astoria is international. Astoria is strong, represent, represent, representative, like a lot of imi- imi- immigration his histories and whatever. And how I can say, it shouldn't be transformed in something like like Monathan, because we already have Monathan. Astoria have to be, have remain like characteristic and very particular place, like a, like chain of the different na- national, different people, different worker, different small business. And very characteristic like food. And this have to be safe. And I have pride that with all that twenty-seven buildings, it's it's will be totally different, different amb- ambient. And it it will be not anymore Astoria. And also, of course, I agree with with that young lady who is very worried about also economic aspect. Because Astoria is still important for a lot of people, because it's kind of still affordable solution for for life. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Angelina. We'll move on to the next individual who wants to testify from the public.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. If there are no other speakers on forty dash twenty-five Crescent Street, I think Doreen Mohammed is the last person. We could promote her to panelist.
She's been promoted.
Doreen, you may begin your testimony.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for hosting this. Someone that's grown up in Queens, they serve on Queens Community Board one. And, you know, like, it's always the same concern these projects, to echo the comments that Marie and Christina made, there's not enough deeply affordable units. You know, like, the developers have a choice to make more family-friendly units, more affordable units, like using the MIH program, which we know is flawed and limited. It's not the way to go about it. Like, if you wanted to make it all fully affordable, you could still make a profit. Like, we, this area, CB one, which I spoke about at the community board meeting, to discuss, like, it's forty-five percent is like very low income to low income. We need like deeply affordable housing at thirty percent AMI or less. So like the forty percent AMI, thus cut it. We also need family-friendly housing, places that have mostly studios or one bedrooms that aren't affordable and would require overpaying to afford. It doesn't work. And we need to be building those type of housing. And like, that, the, we, I am tired of seeing these rezonings that aren't me. We are in a housing crisis here in New York City and in Queens in particular. The gentrification and displacement risk in Astoria is that it continues to skyrocket, especially for black or teen ex, working-class immigrants, our senior folks, our disabled folks. And that needs to be addressed here, you know, like, it peak, like, I, I grew up in Queens. I don't, I can't, I'm on the committee board. I work in city government. I can't afford these apartments. And like, that's, that's the problem. And like, and I'm in a privileged place that I'm able to testify and speak on. Imagine so many of our neighbors, like, street vendors having to be moved so this can be built, like, it, this really is unacceptable. We need more deeply affordable units. Honestly, the MIH, it, it should be a hundred percent deeply affordable housing. But if it's not going to be that, it needs to be seventy-five percent deeply affordable housing and twenty-five percent what they like to call market weight, which is like not affordable to, God knows who. But, um, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, Doreen. Alright, we're going to move on. Any other members of the public who wish to testify on this issue?
Yes, there's one more speaker, Gil Lopez.
Hi there. Yes, my name is Gil Lopez. Uh, I've been a resident of Western Queens for the past twelve years and, um, first, I just want to say that MIH and AMI are broken and they're nothing more than constructs of the real estate lobbyists. They're not actually affordable to the real residents that live here in Western Queens. And they must be reformed. Uh, I would, I, I would say that until this reform of uh, the area median income happens at a larger scale, Astoria should take a stand against any new development without truly affordable housing for our residents. That includes everyone that lives here now, not just like a small percentage that might be able to go into a lottery to potentially get a house that might be affordable. The person who is answering Mr. Richards' questions, uh, Donovan Richards asked if there, if the courtyard is available to the public. And the guy said, yes, it's available to our residents. I don't know if that was like some slinky lie or like what, what kind of like slime move that was, but like, no, it's not public. It's only available to the residents that live in the building. That doesn't mean it's public. You cannot say that's public. It's time to, that we demand better. We have to stop allowing these developers to get away with the minimum in our community. Let's send a clear message that Astoria does not want the, or need their crumbs. Not only do, not even if they hire union, the union people that they hire don't even make enough money to buy these, to live in these buildings. Thirty-seven thousand dollars a year for a unit? That's more than I made when I worked for a respectable, well-known nonprofit that contracted with the city to do a public servant's job. I couldn't pay rent by paying my entire income to that. It's not okay. You're going to be displacing people. And they, they keep on talking about these models that this project will increase affordable housing. And this is objectively false. And it's based on the assumption that we live in a free market, which is not true. So I'm, I'm against this. I think it's silly that they, that they, they looked at the models and they don't think retail is a good thing to be putting in here. Come on, it's, it's a transit hub. People walk on the streets all the time. You need mixed use. Don't put a glass wall and, and glass everybody in the community out. Like, give us some shopping at, at retail, at the street level, or give, give the, the space to community groups or something. Not that I, I think that you're going to do anything worth that. And any community group that would take your crumbs is probably not worth operating in our community anyway. Thank you for your time. I'm completely against this project.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Lopez. Alright, do we have any other members of the public who wish to testify on this specific item?
That's the last speaker registered for that item.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Atkins. Seeing none, we will now move on to the next calendar item. Please call the roll.
Yes, calendar items number four through fourteen are related items on Innovation Queens. The ULP numbers are as follows. ULP number two, two, zero, three, six, four, ZMQ. Two, two, zero, three, six, five, ZSQ. Two, two, zero, three, six, ZSQ. N, two, two, zero, three, six, seven, ZRQ. Two, two, zero, three, six, eight, ZSQ. Two, two, zero, three, six, nine, ZSQ. Two, two, zero, three, seven, zero, ZSQ. Two, two, zero, three, seven, one, ZSQ. Two, two, zero, three, seven, two, ZSQ. Two, two, zero, three, seven, three, ZSQ. And two, two, zero, three, seven, four, ZSQ. The applicant is Kaufman Astoria, um, Bedrock LLC and Silverstein Astoria Member LLC. Affected Community Board Number One. Applicant, you may begin your testimony.
Thank you, everybody. Uh, good morning. Um, Jamison, are you sharing the screen today? Thanks. Oh, thanks, Michael. Um, hi, everybody. I'm Tracy Kipun with Kaufman Astoria Studios. Uh, joining me today are Jay Martin with Bedrock Real Estate and Jamison DeVal with Silverstein Properties, along with Jesse Mazer and Jerry Johnson with our Land News Council and Lindo and Alex Lieber with our environmental consulting team. Thanks again for your time. Um, let me start by saying we acknowledge that there have been some missteps in our community outreach. Um, and we apologize, but we are trying to correct. For instance, with our language outreach, I think we improved by publicizing our workshop and town hall notices in Bangla, Mandarin, Greek, and Spanish, as well as in English and advertising in same, uh, speaking language news outlets. And again, we will continue to try to improve as we move through this process. But I will also say that we have always been sincere in our intent of building extraordinary amenities into this plan. Next slide, please, Michael. Um, to the bubbles, thank you. You know, this is two acres of publicly accessible, permanently public open space. We are talking about a sixty thousand square foot community innovation hub that would offer workforce development opportunities, everything from the Queens Public Library Tech Lab to the LGBT Network's Leadership Academy, to Urban Upbound's Entrepreneurship Pro- uh, Programming, to resettlement's Guidance Counseling for College Bound Kids and ESOL Classes. It's a tremendous opportunity. We also acknowledge that affordable housing is a big part of the discussion. We are proposing over seven hundred units of permanently affordable homes at a variety of types and different types and, and sizes, including senior homes. And I think that will not sell, it, it certainly doesn't solve the housing crisis, but it's a step in the right direction. Next slide, please. And it's also about jobs, thirty-seven hundred construction jobs, seventeen hundred permanent jobs. And those include good union building service jobs. We're talking about fifty million dollars in new annual local spending to support businesses in the neighborhood. And again, it's in addition to the community innovation hub, it's more space for community-serving not-for-profits to expand their programming and services, like the Floating Hospital. They're a charity hospital. They have a terrific facility in Queensbridge. It would be replicating that in Astoria, medical services, dentistry, psychiatric and social services, as well as a daycare on-site. That is a tremendous asset for this community. And with that, I will turn it over to Jesse. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
No. No. I'm just looking at the map of the outlines. No? Fuck you. No.
Please mute whoever's. And if people are not testifying, I don't think they.
I'm on mute.
Please.
Okay, uh, thank you, thank you, Tracy. Uh, I assume I can be heard. Uh, when we started this project, we started, ownership charged our consultants, including myself and others, with five principles in how to do this development. One was, as Tracy alluded to before, was the creation of significant open space. We recognize this community has among the least amount of open space available to the public of any community, not only in Queens, but in the city at large. The next was to create a community facility core that allowed us to partner with existing commu- not-for-profits in the neighborhood, which Tracy alluded to. Next was to create a robust commercial framework for this area that would create, one, the opportunity to live, work, to live where you work. And second, to strengthen the retail and help the existing Steinway Street Core to be enlivened and to start its own turnaround. Next was our desire to create housing, the most significant part of our application, because it allows us the opportunity to create, as Tracy said, over seven hundred units of affordable housing, while in terms of massing, to direct our massing towards Northern Boulevard, which is site E and D, as you see on the screen above you. And last but not least, was our commitment to sustainability. That this is a project not just for the future, but of the future, that we are going, and we'll get into that a little bit later. Uh, some cutting-edge sustainability objectives for this project will make it stand out and be the example for all future of that next slide. This slide just highlights, and I'll be very quick and try to go through this. We have a lot to cover today. Uh, these are the, oh, this represents the two acres of open space publicly accessible, fully maintained at the expense of developer. It's, it's unprecedented in terms of its amount of open space, in its planning of its open space. And we also recognize that taking twenty-five percent of our land off of the development of this project did result in some taller buildings, as we will show later. Uh, you can't have both. You cannot have a project with no open space. It ju- just wouldn't work for us and it wouldn't work for Queens. Next slide. Next, this is demonstrating to you the, uh, community partners that we have already committed to and are working with, and they're showing you their locations within this area. There's over a hundred thousand square feet of community facility space in this project, but all anchored by the sixty thousand square foot Innovation Queens building that you see highlighted where you see Queens Public Library being pointed to. Next. This demonstrates our retail. And you see that, uh, our retail space is significant, but most of it actually occurs in the relocation of cinema that was, is currently on Block A, which will then be moved to Block D. Uh, this would be a new state-of-the-art cinema. And the rest of our retail highlighted was the supermarket on Block B. And our idea and our commitment, as you see, the smaller scale retail, because we see this as lining us back to Steinway Street retail, strengthening the local retail corridor. Next slide. This very quickly just shows you the significant amount of almost a quarter million square feet of new office space. We think this is an exciting part of our project, because giving people the opportunity to live and work in the community, cutting down on our transportation needs. And finally, the next slide shows you the residential building. And you see the massing as it grows from Block A all, all the way to Block E, putting the taller buildings along Northern Boulevard. And the next slide is our slide about sustainability. And I, I would point out, other than the normal sustainability that you all the time, there are a number of things here that are really cutting-edge and unique. First is our commitment to an all-electric building, to cut down on emissions significantly for not only Astoria, but our city. And next, and probably most significant, is our commitment to geothermal energy as a potential source here. And to that end, we're not just saying it, we have been working with NHTC to create a protocol. Once we get the project hopefully approved and we can demolish, this starts to begin to explore our geothermal energy potential. Complicated by the infrastructure and the streets, subways, water lines, but this is something we feel very, very strong and committed to. Other sustainability elements, we, of course, use of stormwater retention, electric vehicle charging. But this is to us the cutting edge of this project. With that, I would ask my colleague, Mr. Johnson, to take you through the ULP zoning actions that are before you, Mr. President. And then we can get back to environmental and finally, Community Board reaction.
Hey, thank you, Jesse. Good morning, Mr. Borough President and staff and members of the public. This action, uh, to facilitate requires three types of zoning actions. The first is a zoning map amendment, then a few zoning text amendments, and then, um, a series of special permits to the large-scale general district, uh, provisions and within the resolution. Next slide, Michael. So, um, the action here, the current zoning is M11 throughout the five blocks, with the exception of Steinway Street Corridor, which is Zone C42A. So to facilitate our project, we are creating a mixed-use district, pairing M1 or the, the existing manufacturing regulations with, um, our residential, um, districts to facilitate the mixed-use nature of the project. This is consistent with um, other manufacturing areas in the city that are going to mixed-use, um, and we're following that trend. Uh, in addition, following the zoning, typical zoning protocols of higher density on the wide streets and avenues, a lower density and mid-block condition on narrow streets, um, we've selected, uh, a few zoning districts, uh, for various portions of the five blocks. Uh, so we're creating a, we're mapping an M14 through most of the site, uh, and then pairing it with an R73, uh, in the narrow street mid-block condition. An R9 along Thirty-Fifth Avenue, Thirty-Sixth Avenue, and Steinway Street. Uh, an R7X contextual district opposite the low-rise residential uses north of Thirty-Fifth Avenue from our site. And then finally, an M15 and an R91 along the very wide uh, Northern Boulevard to, to accept that district. Uh, next slide. This is another graphic representation of the zoning districts. Now, uh, next slide, okay. This is, um, our, our site plan from, uh, bird's eye view. As you can see, the rezoning area is much larger than the Innovation Queens project, or a subset of it. And so because we're a large project over five blocks, um, we are able to avail ourselves of the provisions of the large-scale general districts that allow city planning to waive certain zoning requirements in order to develop a, a multi-site uh, site plan and provide a superior site plan overall for the project. Um, so we will be seeking, go back, Michael, yeah. So we're seeking special permits to waive the bulk regulations across the site. Specifically, we're distributing floor area from Blocks A over to the, uh, Blocks D and E. Um, seeking some heightened setback waivers, primarily to articulate the buildings along the street, provide greater setbacks and a better pedestrian experience. Um, with, um, then four locations with, uh, minimal height waivers, um, all located along Northern Boulevard or Thirty-Fifth Avenue and the, and the, um, on the wide street and the intersection of Steinway and Thirty-Fifth. For a second, because we're relocating the theater to Block D, um, and it is, has a, uh, primarily a second-story presence and then mid-block presence, we're seeking, um, some additional signs at the corner of Thirty-Fifth Avenue and Forty-first Street to identify the theater in that location and provide directional signage to the entrance. Well, we are also, as part of the project, we're providing the, it's, it's unique in that there are five um, accessory parking garages located on the cellar level of each one of. located on the cellar level of each one of these buildings that are shared in common spaces with the individual separate buildings above. So we're distributing parking spaces across the five, five blocks. Finally, one of the text amendments that we're doing, and I skipped over those earlier, I just realized, I apologize, is we're seeking a text amendment to the loading dock provisions of the large-scale general district special permit, so that we can reduce loading docks throughout the project. Because of the unique nature, we were able to consolidate the use of the loading docks and reduce the number of loading docks throughout the project, which provides, we believe, a better site plan in terms of a more active street front that's not broken up by dead space of loading docks, reduces the number of curb cuts along the street, providing more street parking and less conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles. And finally, we are seeking a special permit for retail space that exceeds 10,000 square feet in an M1 district. The sites themselves, we're not seeking primarily large retail users, but we do need it for the supermarket. And the intent and the initial application was that there would be some spaces that might be able to be merged into something slightly larger than 10,000 square feet, but it, the goal has always been to be more of a local retail development. I'd like to take a step back and talk about the zoning text amendments, which I inadvertently skipped over. We are seeking a text amendment to create the MX24 Mixed-Use District, which ties all of these zoning districts together. And then we are seeking to map the entire project area, which is the full five blocks, as a mandatory inclusion housing area pursuant to Option 1. Next. Now Lynn, I'd like to turn it over to Lindo to talk about our secret impacts and the racial equity report.
Thank you, Jerry. As part of this proposal's ULRB process, an environmental impact statement was prepared to assess the proposal's effects on 19 technical areas as outlined in the city's environmental quality review guidance. Next slide, please. Of the 19 areas, the DEIS discloses that the Innovation Queens proposal could result in significant impacts in six of the 19 technical areas. This slide presents a summary of the six technical areas and identifies proposed mitigation measures to address the impact, and whether the proposed mitigation measures would fully or partially address the impact, as well as areas where they may remain unmitigated and additional work would be ongoing between draft and final to address them. Because of the introduction of the new population to the project site, the DEIS discloses that there would be additional demand on library services for which the Innovation Queens team has formed a partnership with the Queens Public Library to identify additional capacity and service support onsite. Additionally, the additional population, residential population, will have a demand on publicly funded childcare capacity, particularly as it relates to the construction of the affordable housing units. The applicant team will monitor the demand as the residential programs are built out over time and will commit to the provision of additional capacity, so additional slots, either through providing onsite or offsite capacity or funding for those additional demands. So as you could see here, working with the agencies, Queens Public Library, as well as the Department of Education, we have deemed that the mitigation would be fully satisfied upon these commitments. And that's noted by the full solid green. The other impacts that we have related to the project's developments would be on impacts to open space, in active open space in particular, given the fact that this community already has a shortage, actually, most of the city has a shortage of active open space. To address that, the proposal includes additional active open space as part of the proposed development's parcels. And in addition to that, we are having discussions with New York City Parks on how to improve other existing local parks to make it more amenable for greater utilization. Because of the project's massings, there would be, so adjacent to Playground 35, there would be shadow impacts on that park, where again, speaking and coordinating with New York City Parks to, to fund additional active open space and improvements, either onsite or also potentially in other nearby local parks in the area, and as well as monitor and, if needed, replace any kind of vegetation which would be impacted by the shadows and replace them with tolerant vegetation as well, and the ongoing maintenance of such vegetation. And therefore, those are considered to be partial mitigation. Transportation, we looked at three key areas. That would be traffic, pedestrians, and transit. For traffic, as you could see here on the table, we had looked at 42 intersections, half of which were determined to be significantly impacted by our project. And so out of those 24, we have been able to mitigate fully half of them. So 12 would be fully mitigated, 12, 12, the other 12 would be partially. We are currently in, in coordinating with DOT to refine our analysis and to find other measures in which we can try to further address those impacts as part of the final EIS. Pedestrian impacts, we had looked at 138 different elements. We feel very confident that we will be able to address most of those with additional timings and widened sidewalks and crosswalks. The one area where we have disclosed an unmitigated adverse impact is in the area of transit line haul. That is not the stairs, the stairwells, or the turnstiles, but the ability to add new trains for the additional demand. Our analysis indicated that we would need two new train sets, but in, and right now, under the current procedures, New York City Transit can only accommodate one, and therefore, we deemed it as a unmitigated impact until such a time that there could be a system-wide improvement, since it is not just station-oriented. We have also disclosed air quality impacts as they relate to the traffic, the mobile source component. And again, the analysis indicates that we are not in any way above or exceeding the federal standards, and so there's no public health impacts there. What we are doing is exceeding the de minimis thresholds developed by DEP for individual projects. We are currently in discussion with both DOT and DEP to refine the analysis and to add perhaps additional traffic mitigation to address the issue. And lastly, we have construction noise. As with all things, construction is a interim, but it is, for a project of this size, sustained. One of the areas that we have disclosed as an impact are noise impacts to the local sensitive receptors, the nearby residences and schools. We have come up with mitigation measures in terms of controlling the noise, either by placement of equipment, electrifying where we can. And we will continue to coordinate with DEP in mindfully staging our equipment. And with that, next slide, please. And as part of this project, although not required because we were certified prior to the June start date, the, we did undertake a racial equity report. And as you could see here, there are a number of findings there. Overall, based on the city planning app, where they had aggregated the data, the summary of the key findings are that the Innovation Queens development project would meet many of the goals of and strategies for the city's fair housing plan. And that includes facilitating, building equitable housing of all different incomes, and also preventing the displacement of residences because of the nature of the affordable housing and the commitment for permanent affordable housing there. There's also other investments related to increasing the overall housing in the Astoria neighborhood and increasing the opportunities for New Yorkers with disabilities and New Yorkers of color by placing these affordable housing units in accessible, accessible to jobs and transit, as well as to open space. And with that, I close my environmental and I pass the microphone to Jay.
Thank you, Lynn, and thank you, Mr. Borough President and your team, for giving us an opportunity to present the project. And thank the members of the public who are here, many of which are interested in this topic, which is affordable housing, which is really a dire issue in this city. So I want to speak to the affordable housing component of our project. We begin with what you've heard before, 711 permanently affordable housing apartments that are created by this project. This includes studio apartments that begin at $715 a month, one-bedroom apartments that start at $903 a month, two-bedrooms that start at $1,071 a month. In total, we have 540 apartments that will be less than $1,675 a month. That includes family-sized two- and three-bedroom apartments, 200 of them, under $1,675 a month. The idea of this project is really to expand upon the diversity of Astoria and Queens in terms of people coming from all over the world with all kinds of skills and income levels and bringing it into these five blocks that currently have very little housing. So going to the next slide, you'll see that these apartments will be available starting with individuals making $37,000 a year, families of four making $53,000 a year. In the bottom table, you'll see, in total, we have 284 newly created apartments that'll be set at 40% AMI. We have another 284 permanently affordable apartments created at 60% AMI, and then a remaining 143 at 100% AMI. We've heard the feedback from the community in regards to doing more on affordability, both in terms of increasing the overall percentage of affordable units, as well as the depth of affordability. And we know, Mr. Borough President, you have a particular interest in seeing more 30% AMI units, and we are actively working with your office and more broadly to deliver that. And so we look forward to ongoing conversations to do more than what you see in these charts. So I'm going to turn it over to Jesse Mazur to talk about the input we received from the Community Board and its Land Use Committee.
Thank you, Jay. And, Mr. Borough President, I assure you, this is the end of our presentation. We're not trying to filibuster the day. When we appeared in the Community Board's first public hearings, the Vice Chair of the Land Use Committee read and published out loud what were the concerns of this committee as to our project. And so if I could summarize those concerns, if I can quote them exactly, but I will do my best. And his concerns are really, I think, four or five. One had to do with the existing open space that we were proposing and a concern that that space was really being commercialized and therefore did not have a feeling of truly being open to the public and accessible. And what the next concern had to do with large-scale retail, which my colleague Jerry Johnson alluded to before, and I'll get into more detail about that. Thirdly, was a concern that we were deficient in active recreation. As had you heard my colleague Lindo of the environmental world testify, this is an area in serious need of active recreation space. And finally, I think the most vocal concern that was expressed by the Vice Chairman had to do with the bulk, as it was on 35th Avenue, immediately adjacent to the resident, existing residential buildings. And so with that in mind, we started to take those concerns of the Land Use Committee very seriously and have come up with a number of suggestions and alterations to our proposal. And the next slide, please. This slide shows, you know, from 35,000 feet up in the air, where all of our retail would be, and this would cover the large-scale retail permit. Although it is our desire not to be a destination shopping area at all, but we needed this permit for really two fundamental reasons. One, which I think everybody agrees to, is the creation of a grocery food store on Block B. That does require, however, since of the zoning in this area, it requires the use of the special permit, because the food store would be well over 10,000 square feet. And second was our need to relocate the existing commercial tendency of PC Richards that occurs on Block B, somewhere into the, into our development, also needing the special permit. So what we proposed, and the next slide will show you, is that we will limit this request to only Blocks B, D, and E. And Block B, where the grocery is, and Block D and E, where we hope that we will find an appropriate location for PC Richards, an existing tenant, to relocate. And we have no other desire regarding large-scale development, large-scale retail. Next slide. This shows you our existing bulk, and as you see, the buildings do rise up towards Northern Boulevard. But you also see along 35th, the concern that the Vice Chairman expressed completely, especially on Blocks D and E, immediately adjacent to the residential area. And the next slide will show you, I think, rather dramatic changes that we are proposing. What we're doing is we're reducing the heights of buildings on four of the five blocks along 35th Avenue. Block A is not adjacent to any residential at all, and so it's not altered. What you're seeing is on Block D, we removed a 16-story building to replace it with a two-story commercial podium. Block E, we reduced the eight, we reduced that to an eight-story building. On Block B, we reduced five, we took five stories off that building on the corner of Steinway. So this rather dramatic change in response to that issue, we think we fully addressed that concern. Next slide, we'll talk to the last, if Mr. Congressman, there's no filibuster, is the issue of active.
I'm saying filibuster.
Active recreation.
Please do not call out and unmute yourself, or we will take you out. So we ask everybody to let them finish their application, their presentation, and everybody will have an opportunity to speak. So please be respectful. This is, you know, this is my hearing, and we run a, we run a sharp show here, all right? Thank you so much.
With the issue of active recreation, Mr. President, and what we had proposed at the end of Block A, which we could get into later if you wish, which was our thought, perhaps, of a school site, so we could talk about why it's not. We took part of that site and converted it to active recreation, but we tried to see how we could actually make a more significant and quite frankly, very dramatic approach towards active recreation. And the next slide will show you that. What we are proposing, unprecedented, is 30,000 square feet of active indoor recreation space. Because we recognize we live, where we live, in the Northeast, and outdoor recreation space, while is attractive, and we will talk about that in a second, the climate here does require us to have real viable active recreation space, has, it has to have an indoor element. Here, we are committing ourselves to 30,000 square feet, which would then be immediately adjacent to 13,000 square feet of outdoor space, which we would also commit to outdoor community recreation space, maintained by us, paid for by us. And that is, in essence, Mr. President, an acre of active recreation space as part of this project. If I could finish up by making the final observation, Mr. President. The zoning density that's being sought by this project is very much consistent with the rezonings that this community and this Community Board has seen over the years. What is radically inconsistent about our project to what has been seen over the years is this dramatic increase in publicly accessible open space. To do it otherwise, we think would be a serious mistake in the urban development of this area, not to provide open space. And we understand the open space does create other implications for the project, but we think it is an essential element. And now with this increase in active recreational space, we think we've got this one completely right. So with that, Mr. President, we thank you for your time. And we are, of course, prepared to answer any and all questions you may have.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you so much for your testimony. All right, I'm going to hop right in, and I just want to start with, and, you know, we've been following this from the community input standpoint. So I'm very grateful that you acknowledged the mistakes of the past. I want to hear a little bit more, Tracy, on some tangible things that you're looking to do moving forward, being that you certainly lost the moment to really work with the community in an authentic way early on. So what are some steps that y'all are looking to entertain moving forward?
Thank you, Mr. Borough President. I can say that we will continue our canvassing efforts and our outreach efforts with our team. To date, we've reached out to 165 small businesses, and we will continue to try to grow that number. We have generated over 3,000 cards in support at the Nycha residence and throughout the Community Board One District via these outreach efforts. We are continuing to leave on the table, our team has an interactive website, folks have reached out to us, and we have actively engaged with them, and we will continue to do so. We will meet with groups, we will answer questions, both those who agree with us and those who don't. And if anyone has any additional ways we can be reaching out to people more effectively, we are open to your suggestions.
Okay. And one of the suggestions I'm going to make, and this is something that I've done in my tenure prior to being VP, but certainly working on some other ULEPS, there does need to be a working group, independent, of course, of you, and I'm going to obviously continue to work with the local council member to discuss some sort of framework where there is an advisory board that consists of people, whether they agree with the project or not, but people who are centered in the community. So that is something I'm going to recommend that everyone get on one page on, so that you're hearing directly from the community yourself. So we're going to, we're going to look to make sure there's some sort of alignment there. All right, I want to hop right into, let's go to affordability. So take me through the unit count affordability again. And I know we discussed, and, you know, we've been in talks on the affordability of this project. So I know that we now are having discussions around 30% AMI and certainly want to hear about any conversations perhaps being had with the city or any conversations you're having amongst yourselves in increasing the unit count of affordability, because as you've heard from the community, and I certainly agree with them, you know, certainly settling in on just MIH itself, option one is not going to be enough to get this over the line. So if you can just speak to what you're thinking of, are there any programs you're thinking of, perhaps working with HPD on, or are you entertaining increasing affordability amongst yourselves? And if you can go, and I'm very happy to have heard the 30% AMI mentioned in this, I just want to hear a little bit more about where we're going.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Borough President, for that question. Again, it's the question that everyone is most interested in. So, and we as well share the desire to increase the unit count. I want to be very clear about that. We are actively working to do so. We have actually met with HPD multiple times already with the intention of delivering more affordable homes as a part of this project. What you see in the chart that I showed a little earlier is just a start. We have a dire housing crisis in the city. This project is not the panacea, but it can help to alleviate the pressure on, the upward pressure on rents through the creation, not only of additional affordable homes, but all of the housing that this project creates. In terms of looking at different AMI levels, in particular, lower AMI levels like the 30% income band, that would be more deeply affordable than what I showed in the chart, we 100% want to work together with you on coming with, coming up with a unit mix that makes sense for this community. And 30% AMI units absolutely can be a part of it, and we can do a meaningful number. And we just want to continue a dialogue with you about, about that and where we end up. But between the depth of affordability, which we'll work together with you on, and continuing conversations at a broader level on additional affordable units, that is absolutely our top priority right now.
And, and because this is not a city rezoning, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't have to, well, the affordable would go through a lottery process, right? The, under the MIH units, correct?
That's correct.
And, and that, and those units would be prioritized to the local Community Board, correct?
50, I believe the current policy is 50% have community priority.
Okay. And are you working with any, perhaps, local housing, or have you discussed any, with any local housing organization? I'm just throwing an NHS, for instance, we have in Jamaica. Are you working with any local organization or any conversation with local organizations who could also help with the lottery process?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So on the marketing and administration of the MIH units, HANOC is our partner, but they also are our partner because we have always said from the very beginning, this community desperately needs senior affordable housing as well as affordable housing for the overall community. And so we're working in partnership with HANOC also to deliver senior affordable housing. You, I know, are aware that the waiting list right now for a low-income senior affordable home is something over five years. It's a really critical situation for our seniors. And so they're a great partner. If you have other nonprofit partners you suggest that we should talk to as a part of our commitment to do more affordability, we are happy to talk to anyone, but we're really excited about the partnership with HANOC as, you know, as a starting point.
Okay. All right. So you've got my drift on affordability. You're going to hear a lot about that today, and I know we've had some initial discussions, and certainly I look forward to the continued discussion around increasing the unit counts, and then also, obviously, the 30% AMI ban as well. So I will move from that. Let's go into local hiring quick, and MWBE and union labor. Can you speak to any conversations or agreements you've reached with labor? And then also, as you've heard, I always sound like a record, at least once a month doing these hearings, we want to see local hiring done in a real way. So we want to see reporting mechanisms put in place, and obviously, 30% minimum local hiring goals is something that we, we require per recommendations we do, and then also 30% MWBE minimum as well. So can you speak to any efforts on MWBE outreach, on local hiring outreach specifically for the residents of Queensbridge, Ravenswood, and Astoria, and many of our immigrant communities as well? So can you just speak to any conversations on those and where we are?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Borough President. We are going to implement a 30% local and MWB hiring program. We've actually recently engaged with McKissick and McKissick, a well-known consultant in this space, to help us craft the specifics of the plan and the implementation of that plan, as well as the tracking of it for both, you know, design, construction, and operations. And that plan will also include working with local organizations like Non Traditional Movement for Women, as well as organized labor to ensure, you know, robust local and MWBE hiring in terms of labor hours. And then specific to labor itself, you know, we have a longstanding and supportive relationship with organized labor. We do have an agreement in place with 32BJ for the building operations of this project if approved. And for construction, we are an active member of REVENIE, and we fully support REVENIE's agreement with the Building and Construction Trades Council, which, you know, speaks to the importance of union bidding and project participation. We're taking that one step further and talking with specific building trades about agreements like that, specific to Innovation Queens. So we are also actively engaged in those conversations.
And, and in terms of the local hiring as well, which I'd just like to put out there, ensuring that there's apprenticeship opportunities, and I would like to see those particular programs either ran out of some of the areas with some of the highest unemployment in the specific zip codes, or, and I know that a lot of the trade shops are in Long Island City too, so making sure that there's a real concerted effort as we talk about upward mobility, certainly, to make sure that folks in the community have an opportunity on these jobs.
Absolutely.
And then also, I have worked with Mackenzie, so I'm happy to hear that in the past, and they have done some good work around reporting on this stuff. So we're going to want an ironclad agreement on the local hiring piece in writing, and once again, monthly reporting on local hires. So do we have an agreement on that? Okay. Yes?
Yes, yes. We will be implementing that program and tracking it all the way through.
And that report should be, and this is something we also would require in a case like this, the report also being issued to the Community Board and to local elected officials as well. So we would require that in writing as well.
Okay.
Okay. And that would be monthly, correct?
If that's what, if that's your request, absolutely.
Okay. All right. We got you on the record. Let's go into, I want to go into the infrastructure and sort of green job space now. So just walk me through, so I saw geothermal, is that, is that real, or are we still entertaining it? And then I'm also interested in knowing what's happening on your rooftops.
So in terms of geothermal, yes, from our perspective, it's real. We are very seriously pursuing it. We've done a very deep analysis with our geothermal consultant and Nicerda on the sort of engineering feasibility across all five sites. There's still work to be done to confirm subsurface conditions, infrastructure in terms of the adjacent subways, city water tunnels, and other regulatory issues before we will know for sure. But we are fully moving ahead and analyzing that as much as possible at this point, and continuing towards implementing that across all five blocks. And then in terms of the rest of our project's sustainability initiatives, you know, in addition to the two-plus acres of open space, we'll be maximizing green roofs to help control the storm water and reuse storm water from across the site, looking at, you know, high-recycled content building materials, sustainable building materials, designing, as we alluded to earlier, you know, electric, highly energy-efficient buildings and HVAC systems that will be used in conjunction with the geothermal energy. But I think the geothermal is really our most exciting sustainability initiative to this point.
And let me ask you, are you looking to be go lead gold, lead platinum? Is your goal around which lead option now?
We haven't identified a specific lead criteria. We have been working with sustainability consultant Stephen Winters Associates to more closely identify the specific sustainability design elements that have the largest impact on our greenhouse gas emissions. So less about an overall, you know, criteria or target or award, but more about designing the specific elements that really improve that. And so we'll continue to look at those as we actually get into the building design process. But our goal is to implement all of these initiatives across all five blocks in virtually every building. So it is a project-wide initiative, not just a specific building initiative.
Okay. And then just talk about infrastructure, because I know storm sewers, and what is the strategy around that? Are you connecting to the city's storm sewers, stormwater system, or you can just go through that?
Sure. So yes, we will be connecting to the city's stormwater sewer water system. The existing infrastructure is actually already undersized, and we will be working with the city to increase the size of the existing infrastructure to make sure that it meets the needs of not just our project, but actually the existing needs of the surrounding community.
And would that flag then the, the EIS?
Yes.
Something you have to do?
Yes.
Good. Okay. Let's go through commercial and community facility space quick. And, and obviously, you know, there could be pressures when a project like this does come into a community. And one of the things I, you know, wanted to hear, and we've certainly listened and heard from the Community Board as well, is on the need for discounted rents for both commercial and community facility and for existing entrepreneurs or restaurants that perhaps are located within the catchment area of this project. So can you speak to first the community facility and any rents that will be discounted, perhaps for even some of the nonprofits that you've spoken of today? And then I'm also interested in knowing, is there room for other organizations to also be on the site? Because I know you've done a lot of initial work getting some local community-based organization on the site, but there may be others out there that may want to be included as well. So can you speak to that?
I think we're going to ask, with your indulgence, Tracy Capuano of our team to speak to that issue, Mr. President.
Sure. Thanks, Jesse. And, Mr. Borough President, I think it's clear that we have a variety of existing not-for-profit partners, and they all have a unique need and a unique desire in how they fit here. I used the Floating Hospital as an example earlier, and they're a great example. A charity hospital cannot pay market rent, right? So we are committing to them to providing a sizable space in a way that allows them to operate long-term. And that is separate and apart from the unique needs of the Museum of the Moving Image, who was looking to create ancillary digital gallery space, and their concern is operating expenses to promote educational programming. So those are just two examples. But I think we are committed to looking on a case-by-case basis. And, you know, this community innovation hub we've been talking about, we have existing partners in that space, but there are room for more folks. So, you know, and I also want to make it clear, some of the folks we've talked to in the community, they don't need brick-and-mortar space, they need classroom space, they need auditorium space, they need event space, and that will be available in this community innovation hub as well.
And it will be available to the community or just to the innovation community?
It could be available to the, I mean, I want the community to view this as a resource. They can walk in and access different programming from a variety of different sources. But if you are a not-for-profit who are looking to create a program and need a classroom to operate it, this is a space for you as well. And we've talked to a number of not-for-profits who are, you know, operating happily in other neighborhoods in Queens who want to expand their programming into Astoria and Western Queens, and this would be a resource for them as well.
And are you thinking of, well, no, so I didn't hear you speak on the restaurant side, or just general stores, period, that may be within the catchment area? What is the outreach there? And then also, are you thinking of, because there are a lot of creative folks in Astoria and Western Queens as well, have you thought of business incubator space that could be helpful to the community as well?
So I think one of the ideas, again, behind the community innovation hub is several different workforce and entrepreneurship spaces, including business incubation space. We are in active conversations with other potential avenues to pursue additional resources towards incubator space. And vis a vis restaurants, I would love to say that there could be, we discussed in early on period where folks can come and talk to us and have almost like first dibs early on in the project, but again, still being fleshed out as a plan.
Okay. And I'm very interested in the business incubator space and also the affordability.
Yep.
Well, okay.
Understand.
And then while we're on community facility, and I am wrapping up, just so the public knows that we want to get to you for testimony and questions, but I do have to get these things on the record. So, so bear with me. Walk me through, so there was originally a proposed school site, or a proposed school on space for, space on the site for a school. Can you walk me through where we're there on, where we're at on that? And obviously, I know there was some sort of breakdown with SCA. And in lieu of that, I think you did the community center space, if I'm correct. So can you speak to?
That's correct. That's correct.
And take me through the?
Yeah. Let me take you back, if we can, to a time when there wasn't even the word COVID in our vocabulary. When this project began, it began with the underlying principle that a school would be required. It was not something that we thought of as, we wouldn't be taking credit for it, as you will, as an amenity, if you will. It was deemed to be a requirement based on our preliminary analysis at the time, based on city planning's own statements to us that is to us that a school had to be included, and actually was statements made by your predecessor in office, Mr. President. And so we fully complied and, and spent over a year uh, with the SCA trying to find the appropriate location for such a school because of their issues about safety, location, which I'm sure you're more aware of than I am. And it was a very good and collaborative process with SCA. What has occurred since then, and it isn't, it's, it's, it's not a criticism by any means, Mr. President, is that the numbers indicated that with the, with the dropping enrollment uh, that's being experienced and being published every day in, in our newspapers, that SCA came to the conclusion that there was not a need by their standards for a school to be on this site. And they communicated that to both city planning and to us in the official progress process. So while we started a long time ago, there was, by the numbers of need, that those numbers now indicated there wasn't a need. And so that, that made us, at the very last minute, tried to come up with what would we do with that site would be appropriate. And at, at that time, preliminarily, what is certified is a combination of open space for both public purposes and for the existing tenants. Then what you saw, the evolution of that idea, is when we got to the community board and heard very loud and clear the need for active recreation space, we seized on that opportunity to reprogram that, that space and to reprogram much of the space that we had inside our buildings to create this enormous one-acre active recreation zone. That's the long, short version of what happened to the school at the end of block, uh, block eight.
Okay, so ACA and, and the EIS did not show a school seat need?
Yeah, exactly, Mr. President. It was, it was the function of the analysis and the numbers.
Um, take me through parking quick? And how many parking spots? Um, and, and also just some other creative, you know, bike racks, um, EV charging? Just take me through the requirements on the parking right now.
The amount of parking is there approximately thirteen hundred spaces, which we think will meet the needs of the project. The, the crazy thing about the secret analysis, Mr. President, is that we have a cinema is part of our project and, and a very popular cinema it is. However, the EIS process makes us assume that the cinema will be a hundred percent occupied a hundred percent of the time. This is sort of a ludicrous assumption to anybody who's been to a cinema, that never happens. Even in, even when Top Gun gets released, there are other screens in the cinema that aren't full twenty-four hours a day. But nonetheless, that is what the secret requires of us, in a very conservative analysis. And so we believe that we are sufficiently parked. We know that parking has always been an issue in this, is the area. The uh, the Steinway Merchants Association has always been concerned about parking in this area for at least the last forty years I'm aware of. And so, so our parking is both to satisfy what we think will be the, the demand by both our residential, commercial, and office tenants, as well as probably be available for some excess parking for the merchants.
So I know what the seeker says, but is that, so that is next instance, that's gonna be, is that a requirement, the amount of spots you're, you're putting in? Or this is just?
Well, what we're trying to meet in our parking is what we project to be the demand, not just from a secret point of view at all, because we don't think the movie theater will be occupied a hundred percent of the time. So we reasonably think the demand will be from the variety of tendencies and visitors that will come to the project.
And I say that because you mentioned in a movie theater, but everybody's watching Netflix. So, so I'm trying to like, understand the strategy around cinema, and the parking. And movie theaters are technically dying, so I'm, I'm, that's why I'm, I'm raising the question.
It may be true, but our, our, this cinema here has always been very popular. And the operator is not trying to get out of this deal, but actually is enthusiastically looking to repurpose and to modernize their theater as part of it. So I'm hoping that they didn't hear your comment on Netflix, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, this is the truth.
No, I understand. I'm, I'm as guilty as you are in that regard.
Right, so and then my question is, could some of that space be, like, if you're not required by city planning to put this amount of parking, could you reprogram some of this space? And you're not, and you're not ZQA, right? So ZQA would obviously give you a, an opportunity to reduce the parking scope. And, and I'm not saying, and I know the area very well, it, it is difficult to find parking up there. Um, but I'm just wondering, do you need as much as your?
Right, right, right now, we do need what we're proposing. Uh, that being said, Mr. President, after the project is built, if, we don't have an interest in having empty parking lot garages. We don't think they'll be empty, but you know, we could be wrong.
And the other thing is, and the other thing is, and you're, you're so you're projecting, so the, the parking would be open to the public? So if I'm Joe Schmo who doesn't live on the site, I would be able to come and, sorry, from a neighborhood retail standpoint, I'm trying to?
Yes, yes, yes. The answer is yes.
You believe, you, you would attract people to come here to park?
We believe that. We, we, we believe that this development will strengthen the Steinway core, uh, which is in need of strengthening, too much vacancy along that corridor. Uh, and obviously, if that occurs, which we think it will, uh, there will hopefully be more traffic, both for traffic and automobile traffic, to support those merchants.
And, and have you come up, are you, is this gonna free, free parking? So for instance, for the community hub, or is this gonna be uh, paid, you're gonna have to pay for?
This is not, we haven't decided what, what the cost will be, but I do not think this will be free parking at all.
Okay, so I'm gonna look for y'all to, to sort of gauge us a little bit more on that.
Yes, sir.
Especially for, um, if you're talking community facility space, I don't want people to have to come to the community center perhaps and have to pay for that, right? And, and, and let's stay on community facility, community facility space, this community center would be open to the general public?
We, we could, we could work on a validation system, Mr. President, that would recognize, distinguish between that use, what you're talking about, and maybe people parking or going to the office building probably can pay uh, full rate. So I think we could look at a validation for a reduction, for sure.
And you also do understand a large part of the population here, and we, we look at community board data, action cycles as well, and uses public transportation. So, yeah, can you just speak to bike racks and other, you know, measures you'll put in place to make sure that other?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Jerry Johnson of my sta- of my group, talk about that, because part of that is actually zoning requirement.
Yeah, so as part, as, as part of zoning, all of the buildings are required to provide accessory bike parking for the tenants and the uh, uh, residents of the, of the facility at a certain number. And that's being incorporated into the buildings and will be, be accessible to the tenants um, as required. Um, but the, but the development itself are looking to other locations to place bike racks um, throughout the development on all, all of the open spaces or near the open spaces, so that there's a lot more access um, for bike um, parking throughout the development and the five, you know, the, the five blocks and all of the opens, the two acres of open space that we're providing, and we'll continue to look, look to that.
Alright, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap up now. I think I hit and got you on the record on many of the points I, I needed to. Um, but I wanna just stress the importance and what, what's important to me, and I, and I know, I, you know, I share this same sentiment as the community and certainly the local uh, council member one as well. Uh, the need to make sure that there's an increase in affordability here is gonna be key for us. And, you know, I know we'll be going back and forth over the next few weeks, but I just wanna stress the importance of that um, to this administration. And we look forward to continuing to hash out uh, negotiations with you on many of these things. Um, and then much more certainty around the jobs piece, um, and what reporting looks like and with those um, key stakeholder partnerships will be as well. Um, and I think, I think I hit on um, many of the point. The only other point I didn't hit on was the height, and if you could just, just distinguish before we go to questions, I know there were calls to um, minimize um, some of the density along, especially where homeowners are, are at um, in height, so if you can just speak to that, so I can get you back on the record on that. Uh, and I know the community board made some recommendations, did you follow those recommendations? One hundred percent around the, the height impacts and density impacts and status impacts. And that'd be my last question, and then we, we, so we will uh, begin public testimony.
Certainly on the issue of height, you saw that we reduced the height along Thirty-Fifth as a transition to the project. Uh, and then we took that FAR for the most part and redistributed it towards Northern Boulevard, although we were able to add some of it to the lower rises uh, on blocks A and B. You know, we, we're not, and we, we're not deaf and we hear uh, the comments about height that have been made all along. I think I referred to this earlier, though, Mr. President, is that what makes this project unique is that twenty-five percent of our land is not being used for development. It's being used for what we think is critically needed, open space, not for our tenants, but for all the residents in the area. So it's hard to have a project of consistent floor area that's not inconsistent with other projects, but yet is inconsistent because it does not build on virtually every square inch of land and therefore requires height, which is why we, for what, from the beginning, and I think the community board's comments indicate agreement, is to try to push as much of the height as we can towards Northern Boulevard. And I think we, that is what we have been trying to achieve in this project.
Right, and we'll certainly look forward to more conversations on that. Uh, with that being said, thank you, and now, I would now return it over to Lisa. Did you, you had anything else to add?
No, Mr. President, thank you very much for your time uh, and your comments.
Okay, and we will now go to Lisa, uh, and let me just set the ground rules. Um, uh, very early on, um, you know, you're gonna have three minutes. I do reserve the right to give more time. And I have flexibility here. We ask everybody, in your comments, to remain respectful. Um, even if you disagree, or you agree, or you disagree to, to agree, um, to just remain respectful. Uh, please watch your language, and uh, and we will now proceed uh, with public testimony. So thank you, uh, Lisa Atkins, you may begin to call the public.
Thank you Borough President. Our first registered speaker on this item is Carl Alston. Please turn on your camera and unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good, good morning, everyone. Uh, my name is Carl Alston. I'm a lifelong resident of Queensbridge Houses, born here in nineteen fifty-nine. I am also a minority contractor. I own Austin Magic Cleaning Service. And I support this project for a, a several number of reasons. One of the reasons because it's gone to, it will, it will help people like myself. Like myself being, being a young, I'm not young anymore, being, being a black man, trying to?
You're breaking out, you're, you're we're not hearing.
I don't wanna miss this.
Okay, you go. Stay, you should stand.
Hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, you should stay still.
Yeah, al- al- also, there's so many job opportunities, not for myself, I mean, for myself as far as my company, but for a lot, a lot of the young men and women in the, in the, in the apprenticeship things. There's so many trades that's gonna be there that will directly help them. It's also like, uh, Jacob Rees is, is a beautiful place. They do great things in the community, but it's seventy years old. God knows that in this community, we need a new community space that, that will, that will go into the new century and help these kids do whatever they need to do, whatever they need to try to be, they need a place to go. That, that's, that, that's another thing. And between, I was born here, between Astoria, Queensbridge, Ravenswood and Woodside, it's not really people like us who live there. So this, this project will give us an opportunity to live outside of NYCHA, which is one of my, which is a lot of people's lifelong dream. Not to say NYCHA's a bad place, a lot of good people come from here. I'm not, I'm not down in NYCHA in any way, just where we live at. But um, I support this project for just, just for so many reasons, and, and I wish that, that everybody, all parties could come together. And like, uh, uh, Borough President said earlier today, we, we put together some sort of committee to try to figure out what's best, what's best, how, how to best get this thing done. Because it's a lot of money, it's a lot of beautiful things. On Steinway Street alone, when I was a kid, we went, we went Christmas shopping on Steinway. It was stores on both sides of the street. Now half the stores are empty, and the other half are full of hu- uh, hooka, hooka lounges or whatever. And that's, that, I, I, I can't say that's a good thing. I'm not gonna say it's bad, but I can't say that that's a good thing. So I think this project would help that, and it would just help the community as, as a whole, like, with so many different things to offer for the community. Change is good, and Lord knows, we need change. We need jobs, we need housing. I mean, this project, this project's not gonna solve the housing for the whole New York City, but, but believe me, it will definitely help somewhat. It will definitely help, I, that, I believe. So I support this project one hundred and ten percent, and I wish we all can get together and try to get this thing done. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Alston. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Gil Lopez, please unmute yourself and begin testimony.
Hi, my name is Gil Lopez, and I wanted to start by talking about greenwashing, which has been deployed by these developers who continually market the perceived benefits, but for obvious reasons, hide and obfuscate the negative.
Next time I see ya, I got a video.
This is common, this is and it's associated with uh, eco gentrification, which is also a com- common practice. This is when a developer cleans up or provides amenities such as open space, which?
Did we lose him? Alright, if he comes back on, we'll, we'll put him on when he signs on. Uh, we'll proceed to the next individual. Then you could uh, add, I will, we continue, we'll continue his testimony.
Okay, next we have registered Sarah Mundandini. Is she back? Gil's back?
I don't know what just happened. I don't know where I lost off, but let's talk about, I'm gonna bring it back to eco gentrification, which is a common practice of cleaning up or provi- providing amenities such as open space, which is specifically designed to increase local property values and attract wealthy residents, thus increasing the local cost of living and causing primary and secondary displacement. It is clear that the owning class developers pushing this project will benefit wildly by the increase in property value, while renters, including businesses and residential renters, will lose. Yes, two acres of new parks is appealing, but those of us moving with our eyes open refuse to be hoodwinked by the promise of parks only to be priced out of the neighborhood we love. If the city and the community do want more open space, let's take back the street that you gifted to Kaufman Studios and give it back to the people in the form of a park. And during the CB one meeting, one of the developers said that um, the city will revoke the, the certificate of occupancy of any building that doesn't maintain the pu- the spaces that it promises during this time. That is completely untrue. While the city does maintain the ability to revoke that certificate of occupancy, it does not happen in real life. I'm a public space advocate, and I can tell you that o- only about ten percent of the privately owned public spaces in New York City are maintained the way that they're supposed to, and none of those buildings have, that had their certificate of occupancy revoked. Look at the city building, which is now Altice, which doesn't provide any indoor amenity, which it's supposed to do right now. And to the community groups offering harm reduction while partnering with these developers who will do absolutely the most harm, you're crumb snatching nonprofit industrial profiteers, please stop enabling the luxury city, stop enabling so you can help us deal with the wreck of a community life that they're gonna leave in their wreck. And, and all you're doing is helping them overprice so that you can swoop in and, and help us? We need your help now, not later when we're dying. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Now move on to the next person to testify.
Maria Papa Georgia. Please unmute yourself. Maria Papa Giorgio. We'll move on. Christina Chase. Please unmute yourself.
I think she is, we can't hear. You may wanna sign in and sign back. You may want to sign in and sign back, sign out and sign back in and just give us a signal when you're back in.
Hey.
Oh, no, wait, I think I hear you. Say, say something.
Oh.
There you go.
Hello.
All right, now, all right.
Good job. I mean, I have a lot to say, but I know others are going to say it, especially when it comes to, once again, affordable housing. But I guess what I wanted to emphasize that is is public space. Public space does not guarantee equal access and enjoyment for all residents and neighbors. Country Plaza in LIC is a prime example of public green space with severe socio spatial inequities that with regard to access and full enjoyment of the land, river, and air. A quick glance at census tract data will illuminate the drastic racial and economic differences on the other side of the bridge. I worry these drastic disparities will emerge in Astoria too. As a resident of public housing, I've watched rezoning and private development foster more segregation and isolation within and across Western Queens, positioning certain areas as inaccessible for our our enjoyment. The blocks I've traversed in all my life have become unfamiliar and almost unwelcoming, occupied by high rise buildings, new restaurants and boutiques, most of which I cannot afford. I feel estranged from the very land that raised me. I was born and raised in, excuse me, I was born and raised in Queens, and now I'm three months pregnant and scared. I'm scared of the world that I'm bringing my child into, and I cannot fathom how many other families have been destabilized and displaced by plans like this. And I will do all that I can to disrupt it so all of our kids can have a stable and vibrant future in Astoria, excuse me, y'all know the hormones, but not just those whose parents are income eligible. Dinner and a movie on Steinway Street are one of the few leisure activities we can still enjoy with our families to celebrate graduations, birthdays, and the like. Innovation Queens will change the culture of our neighborhood and create further barriers for addressing structural inequities that hamper our quality of life and sense of dignity. I'm getting ready to start my own family now, and I want to raise my kid here. I fear that with Innovation Queens, I will no longer able, excuse me, I will no longer be able to shop, dine, and live within the very neighborhood I called home for decades. I implore the Borough President to both hear and listen to the people of Astoria Queens. We say no, and we refuse. Thank you kindly for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, we'll move on to the next individual.
Next registered speaker is Mark Saffman, New York deaf blind associate.
He is not on the Zoom any longer. He had to leave for a meeting.
Okay, next, followed by Michael Anderson. Please unmute yourself.
Good morning, President Richards, and everybody that's on the call. My name is Michael Anderson. I am a ironworker, local forty six ironworker, and I'm representing the families that live in the neighborhood that have reached out to me on their behalf. Coming out of the pandemic, you know, this is a great opportunity to invest in the borough that I love, the town of my beloved Mets. I mean, doing a little research, the development will bring about fifty million dollars into the economy in the area. This would definitely help revitalize the Steinway quarter and bring almost about seventeen hundred permanent jobs, economic boost that the community probably definitely needs. Over thirty five hundred union jobs will come to the neighborhood, which which means immediate spending, which definitely helps, as well, you know, job creation. I heard you talk about local hire. This can definitely create careers for individuals in the neighborhood if we bring them into the trades and start them off in our apprenticeship program, and you know, not give them a job, but give them a career this way, you know, they have a lifelong journey. I mean, we know that, you know, there's always resistance to economic development. I do believe that speaking with the community and getting dialogue, you know, to hear what helps them definitely helps. But also, if the project moves forward, we do believe in good paying jobs, you know, good good paying career. Let me correct that. Not a job, but career. I mean, best way to do that is to do the unions. So I'm with that, you know, we hope our commitment can be made to the ironworkers and the bill trades that this project would be hundred percent union, so we can help with the local hire goals and the WMB and MB goals as well. And that's all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Anderson. We'll now move on to the next individual.
Our our next speaker is a dial in, Demi Amidinua. Demi, you may begin speaking.
Hi, can can you guys hear me?
Yes. Yes, please.
Hi, how are you? Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. Really grateful to have this opportunity to speak today. I currently live down the block from where this will be implemented on Thirty Second Street. I walk past this area a lot. I'm strongly opposed to this, and I appreciate a previous speaker mentioning lack of green space, two acres is just abysmal. We live in a high heat vulnerability index neighborhood, there is this whole area severely lacks green space. It would not be helped with all this development. It will just increase heat. Global warming is is real and not really seeming to be a priority amongst developers and decreasing like negative health outcomes for residents. We are also coined asthma alley, so this would not be good for our public health, neighborhood health, community space health, as often stated that this is an unacceptable amount of affordable housing being offered to the community, truly affordable too, because I know most people, a lot of people can't afford even the lottery numbers, so the lottery housing numbers. And from the, I was at the community board meeting, and hun, over a hundred people, I believe, mostly opposed to Innovation Queens spoke. They know that we have an issue with them sticking to the minimum twenty five percent affordable housing. That is the minimum. They're not doing anything out of the goodness of their hearts, offering this job training as well. I think that's incredible. If they have two billion to blow on a building, maybe they could invest in these people as individuals and not just workers for their gentrification project. So and out of the goodness of their heart and care for the community, they could have come back to us with higher numbers of affordable housing, bump it to fifty. I mean, I want a hundred percent, many of us would want a hundred percent, but not even giving a little bit just shows a complete disrespect. And I please, please, please urge the Borough President to advise against this development because it would just push out residents in the area already. It's encroaching from Long Island City. We would then provide future contacts for developers to take over the rest of Astoria too. And it's just would never, it'll never end. They will eat up the neighborhood, these buildings will stand empty because most people can't afford it. So thank you again for giving me the time to speak. I hope you all have a wonderful rest of your day, and you vote no on this this action item. So thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll now move on.
Next speaker, Doreen Mohammed.
Hello, everyone. My name is Doreen, grown up in Queens, and a first generation Bangladeshi American. I serve on the Queens Community Board One, and I voted against this because as so many of our community members have been saying in the chat at the Queens Community Board One meeting via email, et cetera, like this is not serving what this community needs. This area, I keep saying this day, and I will keep repeating it, forty five percent of Queens Community Board One is very low income to low income. They need housing that the rents are going to be accounting for thirty percent AMIs or less. The the bare minimum that you guys are doing because you're legally obligated, twenty five percent MIH, isn't affordable nor is it sufficient, especially when there is a housing and homelessness crisis, as well as the displacement rate here, which is very high, especially for black, Latinx, and other immigrant and senior residents. It really is unacceptable. The Land Use Committee on the Community Board voted against this based on these concerns as well as other accessibility and public transit concerns. We need more accessible public transit, whether it's a playground that exists there, like this is not going to give more open space. It is really unacceptable like that despite all the feedback that you guys would go and send people to give out bagels in the Nitra complexes and promise them they might get housing, but when they're not eligible, that being predatory and pinning the union members against affordable housing, it really, really is unacceptable. We deserve so much better. Rana Abdalhamid and other folks of the little Egyptian Arab community, there are grocery stores there that are going to be displaced by this, and she's asked me to talk about that as well. We really need to do better. We need to flip the table where instead of twenty five percent fake affordable and seventy five percent market rate, it needs to be a hundred percent deeply affordable housing. At the very least, it should be seventy five percent deeply affordable housing and maybe twenty five percent market rate. You know, there needs to be a school here, like this is going to bring seven thousand more residents, we need more public transit, we need schools, we need so much more. And like trying to make Astoria and working class Queens into Midtown Manhattan, LIC, Williamsburg is unacceptable. There is a high vacancy rate in New York City. It's like, I think, twelve point five percent. There are folks holding apartments hostage, so like building more unaffordable housing will not solve the housing crisis of our neighbors. Like, we need to do better. I urge President Richards that to heed, you know, all the concerns we've been sharing again and again, and to make this project available to you. We deserve so much better. Bangladeshes deserve so much better. Everybody deserves so much better. Thank you.
Doreen, number one concern, oh, did you go, is affordability, correct?
Yeah, if this is not a hundred percent deeply affordable housing for thirty percent AMIs or less, because according to the NYC Echo World Development Tool, like forty five percent of Queens Community Board One is very low income to low income, forty seven percent of this area is also severely rent burdened. You know, people like some of my members, Armand Donnie and other folks, I keep talking about this, you know, I keep talking about this in like the community board meetings and other forums, like we need deeply affordable housing, like rents that are for thirty percent AMIs or less for like all the apartments, not a small subset, all of the apartments. And at the very least, as I just said, the MIH stuff needs to be flipped. We know MIH is flawed, it doesn't meet people's needs. We need it to be where all developed, there should be no rezonings occurring unless it's either a hundred percent deeply affordable housing for thirty percent AMIs or less and or seventy five percent deeply affordable, and like flip the MIH, you know, let's do deeply affordable housing, fine, you want to do a few market rate, but that's what this community needs. You know, like, I I work for the city government, I am on this community board, I've grown up in Queens, I'm college educated, I cannot afford these Innovation Queens or any of these rezoning developments, and so many more Bangladeshi neighbors, Latin folks, like this goes on, like seniors, like that area has a lot of seniors, like they can't afford this. My two bedroom is two thousand here in Astoria. Why would we accept four, five thousand dollar two bedroom? Like, that is absurd. And also, what I didn't get to get into is how unfamily friendly this housing is, like there, most of them are studios or one bedrooms, which aren't affordable, three thousand dollar studio, a four thousand dollar one bedroom, are you kidding me? Most fifty percent of New Yorkers make under fifty thousand a year. And as I mentioned before, this area is specifically very low to low income, so like it needs to be much better.
Yeah, and 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 that's one of the reasons, and I just want to make sure that, you know, the public certainly hears this, that they have now agreed to look at thirty percent AMI, and we are going to push for those numbers to go up, but I just wanted to make sure that that is put on the record, and just to make sure that, you know, everybody hears that that is the concern, is to.
Right, and and just so it's clear, it's, yes, for the existing ones, like that used to be the case, but there needs to be more, just, what is it, like, three hundred are for people who make fifty K or a lot, like, it needs to be, like, that needs to be the majority of the two thousand eight hundred apartments. It needs to, it should be two thousand eight hundred deeply affordable ones, but it needs to be very close to that number if this project should even, should even be worth considering. There's been so much back and forth with the Land Use Committee and other folks, I think they met with them twelve times. There's been such terrible community engagement, when there was Bangla translation on the website, which we had to fight to get, it was like incorrect, people couldn't read it. You know, when I do outreach as a community member here, none of the working class folks, working class homeowners, working class tenants, residents have heard about this project. So many small businesses on Steinway Street.
I'm going to wrap up now.
Yeah.
But I.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to now go to the next person to testify.
Next speaker, Evy Handas, Hanzoopoulos.
Hanzoopoulos.
Please unmute yourself. Followed by John Miller.
Hi, thank you, President Richards. My name is John.
Excuse me, I think we're still trying to get Evy on the on the line. I think we're in the process of promoting her from attendee to panelist.
Yep, I think I I got it now, I was promoted. Hi, everyone. Let me put my camera on. Hi, thank you so much, Borough President, for holding this hearing. My name is Evy Hansopolis. I am an Astoria resident, have been living here for over two decades, a member of Community Board One, but I'm here representing myself, but also my neighbors that I have been organizing with and talking to about this project. I've been following this project for over two years, even before its first presentation to the Community Board in July of twenty twenty. Rumors began circulating about this rezoning. I heard from many small business owners who were seeing their lease negotiations go awry, landlords saying that they were going to be able to charge more rents because of the big development that was happening, and then also seeing many of my neighbors living in rent stabilized apartments getting harassed and pushed out. The developers have talked about their outreach, which was very inadequate and lacking and curated towards a certain demographic, and community benefits, which really are nonbinding, and changes made to this project, but the fundamental issues remain. This is a massive, large scale luxury project on the level of a neighborhood rezoning. It is not just a typical rezoning, and yet it's been treated as such. It will drastically impact not only the zoning area but the surrounding areas, and it will set a precedent for unaffordable luxury buildings because this rezoning is seventy five percent unaffordable, high end luxury, over twenty one hundred units, and there are zero units right now, and I know people are looking into it, but there are zero units right now for people in zero to thirty percent AMI, which is your typical Nitra resident and typical resident who lives in the surrounding area. While there are the required twenty five percent MIH units, only ten percent or forty percent AMI, and again, those units would not be accessible to those who need it most. Also, the developers, when pressed at one of the Community Board meetings, said they would not build any senior housing unless they get subsidies. So imagine billionaire developers who are already getting waivers and density bonuses can't add any more units, affordable units, without subsidies. That is just outrageous to me. There will be a ripple effect because we're not just talking about this specific area, but also that surrounding community. Once you set the precedent for this zoning and this level of AMI, MIH, and this percentage of units, other developers are coming in, and they've already started pressuring small business owners, pressuring homeowners, pressuring other people to buy them out now because they are going to try and rezone more and more of this. So we're really at a precipice here. We can either push back against this rezoning, which is inappropriate, does not serve the community's needs, or we can say, hey, this is okay, we don't care about displacing so many residents, not just in the immediate but in the long term, and really changing Astoria from a working class and immigrant community to one that is for higher income people. Everybody deserves a place to live, but we need to center the needs of the people who are most vulnerable. The Community Board voted this down twenty four to eight, the Land Use Committee voted this down seven to two, the Housing Committee voted this down unanimously because it does not address the community needs, and the developers are trying to impose a project on this community that it does not want. I would love to give a more detailed analysis with the racial impact study, which only came about because, and I will send you those comments as well. I think it's just important to know that this area is not just an intermediate area for risk of displacement. This is also a high risk area as well because it straddles those two areas. So there's more here than what was presented in the racial impact study, and this will create such an imbalance in terms of the demographics of our community, particularly in this area, that we can't allow it to continue. Thousands of cars, this is asthma alleys, we're really at a crossroads here, and I urge you to vote against this. Thank you.
Our next registered speaker, I'm going to go through a couple of them, so you can prepare yourselves, please, speakers. Adis Kolonovic, John Miller will speak next, and then Adis, and followed by Nancy Silverman. John, please begin.
Okay, thank you, thank you, President Richards. Yeah, I was I was born in Western Queens and grew up there my whole life until about a few years ago, I had to move to New Jersey to take care of my elderly mother who just recently passed away. I live in a small two bedroom, just got an increase of twenty seven percent, could raise my rent to forty three hundred dollars for a nothing apartment building that I live in. And, you know, we are moving back to Astoria, you know, immediately. I can no longer afford the the rents here in New Jersey, and I can no longer afford the EZ Pass, and I can't wait to move back to where I was, you know, to where I was brought up. And, you know, just as an analogy of what I saw the other few weeks. And, um, you know, just as an analogy of what I saw the other few weeks ago, a couple of months ago, when I went to the, um, Museum of Moving Arts, Moving Images, um, meeting, I was like in awe of, of the area. And what I remember as a kid, I remember being at decrepit area and just seeing the shops and the restaurants, and, you know, all that, was invigorating, and I can see that happening to this area where this development is being built, in an area where it's all abandoned factories, it's, it's nothing for nothing, and, you know, I just see, I just see the same type of thing happening. Although I can't move into this facility, um, because I need to move back to Astoria quickly, because I work in Astoria, you know, I just am one hundred percent for anything bettering the area in terms of jobs, in terms of the, the tax spinoff that will occur for the tenants of this building, to help us with the infrastructure of Astoria, and, uh, not to mention the, the amount of income it's going to bring to retail businesses in the area. So that's my little two cents. I am one hundred percent for, uh, this project, and once again, thank you, President Richards, uh, for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Now move on to the next member of the public.
Next speaker, Nancy Silverman, please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Nancy Silverman. Um, I live, I'm opposed to this project. I live on Forty Second Street between Thirty Fourth and Thirty Fifth Avenue, in the immediate area, Block D. We, this entire block, we live in what's called Mitchell Flats, that's the architecture style. They're all three-story buildings at the end of our block on Thirty Fifth Avenue. It is a four-story block, a four-story building. This development is totally out of character for our neighborhood. As a former community board member, Community Board One member, and member of the Parks Committee, I took the lead when Playground Thirty-Five got a CPI, Community Parks Initiative grant, and was, um, took the lead in working with the community for that renovation. The amount of community input and activity around that renovation of just that playground puts to shame the, the amount of community input that is towards this large, um, development. The, um, developers have not reached out to the community. I live here, I know this. While I have seen their canvassers out on Steinway Street, I will acknowledge that. They are paid canvassers who are unable to answer questions. They are unable to give information. All that they can do is give the PR points, because that is what they have been trained in. They are not community members. They don't know the project, and no, no, no insult to them, they're just, they mostly look like college students in a summer job. No, no shade on them, but that's who's out there doing community outreach. They cannot answer people's questions. They cannot give the actual answers. This development is so out of character with the neighborhood. In earlier presentations that developers gave, used to give, they used to talk about what a terrible neighborhood this is. They used to talk about, they used to, they used to brag about a food hall coming, and that there would be curated immigrate, um, international restaurants, until we, until we argued back that the neighborhood already has that. You see in their recent presentations, they don't say that anymore. Because, yes, they have learned from, from those of us who are speaking out against this, but they're all, they've only learned to do better PR, because they know that we will latch on to that and say that you are disrespecting us. Some people have already spoken about Kaufman Astoria Studios, Thirty Sixth Street, de-mapping. I want, so, that is, go back to what Kaufman Astoria promised to get that de-mapping from the community board. They promised three things, no more preferential parking for Kaufman, increased, um, local hiring and, and internships at, uh, so the Frank Sinatra School, and I just forgot the third one, my apologies. As far as I know, none of those things were done, and those are really easy, especially the internships at, at Stein Sinatra School. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Silverman. We'll move on to the next member of the public.
Next registered speaker is Tafadar Sorol. Laura Picalio. Laura, you are promoted. Please unmute yourself. We move on. Devon Lomax, you are promoted. Please, Devon.
Hey there. Hello?
You guys hear me?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Oh, all right, uh, just, uh, is Laura first or Devon?
Laura.
Oh, Laura, sorry. So Devon, you're next.
Hi there, good morning, everyone. When seventy-five percent of the housing proposed is completely unaffordable, studios at thirty-one hundred dollars, what are we even doing discussing this? Why would this project even be considered by any government entity? This is not for the people of Astoria. We are a working-class neighborhood. I have lived in this area my whole life. I am first-generation immigrant, and I wonder when I will be forced out. And it's coming, it's coming fast, at thirty-one hundred dollars for a studio. This project will have catastrophic effects for decades to come on the area. Do not listen to the people who do not live in Astoria, who are paid to be speaking today. I really beg the VP to listen to the community board, who voted against this, because the community is against this project. We are demanding better. We need housing. I think everyone is well aware we are in a housing crisis in Queens. This is not the solution. We need to build a better Queens, because we need to demand better. Seventy-five percent unaffordable housing is not better for Queens. We do not need this housing to push us out. What we do need is our projects that benefit the community. We need to build smart, we need to build fair. This is neither of them. This is not meeting the needs of Queens residents. I don't know how many residents need to speak out against this, because they showed up. We showed up at community board meetings, we've been showing up every time we're being asked, what do we want? And we are saying, we do not want this here. We need affordable housing, seventy-five percent unaffordable, thirty-one hundred dollars for a studio. This is not for Queens. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Now move on to Devon Lomax.
Hi, uh, good afternoon. Uh, thank you, Mr. President, for holding this, uh, meeting. My name is Devon Lomax. I'm born and raised in Queens, um, and I'm with District Council Nine of the Painters Union. We have over three hundred members that live in the Community Board, um, Community Board One, and we rise in full support of this project. For us, it's about jobs, it's about careers, it's about apprenticeship programs. Our members that live in this area, you know, want to stay in the area, and their careers are in construction. Um, and this project will bring those, those good union jobs to them. And not only that, the surrounding communities, you talk about, um, you know, high unemployment rates, you talk about, um, you know, even crime, and, you know, these kids need jobs and they need careers, um, and this project can help us do that. Working with the developers and working with, uh, the community boards and not-for-profit organizations, um, and how we can get a lot of these kids into the apprenticeship programs. Coming out of COVID, a lot of, a lot of construction workers were out of work. We're starting to get back, and we need more projects, uh, to do that. Like I said, our members want to stay in the community, they live in the community. Um, none of them are paid to be anywhere. You know, they showed up for good jobs, responsible development, um, and to feed their families, quite frankly. So again, we rise in full support. Um, we'd look, we look at projects like this and, and, as having vision and, and rising and, you know, raising people's wages and raising, uh, their, their, their way of living. So again, we rise in full support of this project, and, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Adis Colenovic has returned. Please unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Hi, my name is Adis Colenovic, and, uh, I'm actually a native of Astoria. PS eighty-four, IS one forty-one, William Cullen Bryant. I'm from Astoria. I know a lot of people there. It's, I don't know where to start, it's mind-blowing. I'm gonna give addresses. Thirty seventy-seven Vernon Boulevard, Astoria West, forty-five dollar one bedrooms currently for rent, right now, the building's already up. Twenty-one twenty-one Thirty First Street, The Rowan, thirteen hundred dollars a square foot, they're selling condos. Now let's talk about a row house, an attached row house, twenty-two dash twenty-four twenty-ninth street. A nineteen hundred square foot house sold for one point nine million. My point is that Astoria is already up. Astoria will continue to go up with or without this development site. It's mind-boggling. There, uh, right now, that area is a rat-infested, pothole-infested, smelly, loud-truck-infested area. Thirty Fifth Avenue, physically, go over there, there's, there's all warehouses that are graffiti-ed, it's all broken down. I would love to see this development site come to Astoria. Astoria is gonna continue going up with or without. People like myself or whoever are, are gonna get muscled out regardless. You know how many development sites are coming to Astoria right now, regardless? Look on Thirty First Avenue, look on Twenty First Street, look on Astoria Boulevard. There's so many development sites going up that don't provide affordable housing. These are all private, private companies that are building, so my main message is, this is not the movie Up, where some old lady is getting forced out. This is currently warehouses, warehouses. So, do you want zero affordable apartments, or do you want five hundred forty? Or seven hundred, I forgot what the amount was. So do you want zero affordable apartments, or do you want five hundred forty affordable apartments in that area? Add it to Astoria. So basically, let's say you guys push this developer away, right? You're still gonna be muscled out. Astoria is still going up because of its proximity to the city. These people from Manhattan are getting pushed out, they're coming here. So whether this development site happens or not, rates are still gonna go up. The, the, the rents, it's just crazy to me, and they're asking for seventy-five percent affordable, uh, housing from, from the, this is a private developer that's coming in with his, with their own money. Now, if this was the city building these buildings, then yes, you can say, give me a hundred percent affordable housing. This is a privately-held company. They're being nice to say, hey, listen, twenty-five percent of units will make it affordable housing, to make you guys happy and to make us happy as well, whatever it is. But at the end of the day, they're, they're asking for seventy, it's not realistic. My main message is, Astoria is gonna go up. A lot of people will get muscled out that don't have, uh, own properties, regardless. Let this development site come in. Astoria is all walk-up, free-market townhouses, where the landlords want the highest rent. So Astoria will continue to go up with or without this development site. I am for this development site. My name is Adis Colenovic. Please let this development happen, it'll bring a lot of jobs. Please don't be brainwashed.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll now move on to the next member of the public to testify.
Next speaker, um, Ariadne Cologne. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Um, thank you for holding this hearing. My name is Ariadne Cologne, and I have lived my entire life in Astoria. Um, once upon a time, Astoria used to be a place that you needed to explain to people that it was what you drove through to get money. Sorry? Sorry?
Go ahead, go ahead, I'm muted. No worries.
Um, I am not against development, but not all development is the same, and not all proposed projects should get a blank check under the guise of opportunity. This proposal by Innovation Queens that is being presented before us today continues to be wrong for Astoria. Innovation Queens proposed twenty-seven-story buildings, unprecedented in this community, is grotesque. The size of those buildings will completely overwhelm the residential buildings located nearby, and will attract an inordinate amount of people to an already overcrowded part of Queens. We simply do not have the infrastructure to support this. This myth of trickle-down affordable housing is one of the biggest lies propagated by Innovation Queens. This project will not offer meaningful benefits for Astoria residents who are struggling to afford housing. Of the residential units planned, a very small percentage would be set aside for low-income people to rent. This is critical in a neighborhood where seventy-six percent of residents are renters, and where two-thirds of those renters are rent burdened, paying too large percentage of their income towards rent. According to recent census figures, almost a third of households in this community alone spent more than half their income on rent. Innovation Queens chose to not adequately look into a number of concerns in a timely way, including the risk of racial displacement and the effect of speculative development on local businesses, many of which can be more valuable to landlords as land sales. Developers often purchase the unused development rights of adjacent buildings to add height and bulk to their buildings. We are tired of luxury development in Queens pricing us out, and we are done with developers that are abusing zoning loopholes. Queensborough President Richards, please listen to the needs of those who are marginalized and voiceless. Communities all over New York City are standing up to greedy developers, and we invite you to do the same. Please say, to say yes to this means that you will be opening up a floodgate for more developments like this, instead of damaging and irreverible president in Western Queens. Please follow suit with the decision that was made by Community Board One, and say no to the Innovation Queens project in Astoria. Astoria deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Now move on to the next member of the public.
Next speaker, Tafadar Sorol.
Hello, um, my colleague, Tafadar, was unable to attend today, but, um, my name is Avro Gonzalez, and I'm a member of Frente Hispano, and I have multiple ties to Queens in, in the area, or family members that live in the area. And basically, I'm talking up for an approval of this project, because it's gonna bring a lot of union jobs, you know? We often talk about, we can't afford it, we can afford it, but you know, why can't we afford it? Because there's, this, a lot of these projects are going up non-union, and they don't, they don't raise people up. And what juniors jobs do is that, not only do they raise, you know, wages for people, but they also do local hire. So people in the area will be hired to build this project. So, you know, and by hiring, uh, union workers, you also bring something like, uh, healthcare, retirement funds for people in the area, you know? That, that's a lot of things that we all often overlook. So, that's, that's thing, and also, when you have people working, especially union people, you know, that live in the area, that stay in the area, they spend their money in the area. So the more people you could allow to stay in the area by giving them good jobs, the, will be better for the community. That's my take on it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Now move on to the next member of the public to testify.
Excuse me. Next speaker is Isadora Zanin. Please unmute yourself. Isadora?
Is it Isadora? Zanin, is it? Isadora?
She's coming in.
Okay.
Hi, hi, I'm here, hi.
Hello.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, hi, um, so, um, like many people who have spoken before me, I am a resident of Astoria. I'm an immigrant. I came to the US when I was seven years old with my mom, and we both moved into a one-bedroom in Astoria, right by where the development is proposed to be, on Thirty Fourth Street, between Thirty Fifth and Thirty Sixth Avenue. Um, and I could tell you about my history as an immigrant, but I'm just gonna throw some statistics at you, because a lot of people have been talking about gentrification, and I just want to make it really clear what that means. Um, according to the Furman Center, um, since two thousand, the foreign-born population has dropped from forty-six to thirty-five percent in Astoria. Percentage of black folks has dropped from ten point four to five point two, so halved. And the percentage of Hispanics, while, has remained the same from twenty-seven point four percent to now twenty-seven point, uh, sorry, from twenty-seven point five to now twenty-seven point four. It actually increased in two thousand six to thirty-one percent and has decreased again. Meanwhile, the percentage of Asian people have increased steadily from twelve point five to fourteen point seven, and the increase of white folks in Astoria has increased from forty-nine point nine to forty-nine, sorry, from forty-one point nine to forty-nine point five percent. That is to say, the increase of people who are white have been the most dramatic increase in the neighborhood. So when, uh, we see stats of who makes up Astoria, we have to be very aware that a lot of people who are now making up Astoria have, are newcomers in Astoria, and all of this, by the way, while the actual population of Astoria has dropped about forty thousand people, so making, for my, for my, in my eyes, the percentage is even a greater, you know, shock, considering who's moving in and who's moving out. So, I'll move on, uh, to talk about the biggest change, um, in household, um, income. While every bracket under a hundred thousand dollars has gone down percentage-wise, the bracket between a hundred thousand and two hundred and fifty K has increased from twenty-two point four to twenty-nine point six percent, meaning a lot of new people have income, have come into Astoria with more income than the people who were here before. So I just want to paint a picture to say that we are literally being pushed out of Astoria, right? These people, this increase and this decrease in population really plainly shows that the people who are in Astoria now are wealthier people who have been coming in for the last fifteen years, while these new buildings have been put up constantly all around Astoria. I've seen it. I can't see the Hell's Gate Bridge for my house anymore because of new buildings such as this. And the people who do remain, I'm forty-first, forty-seven. And the people who do remain, a forty-first, forty-seven percent of Astorians are rent burdened. And the per capita median income, so per person, is still only forty-four thousand dollars, meaning that a person cannot, a single person can't rent a one-bedroom or studio at the market rate of Innovation Queens. So I'm here to speak, I'm here to put statistics and a face. Like you've seen many faces, but I just wanted to show you some statistics to show that really this is happening. These people are being pushed out. We are seeing a different type of, a wealthier type of people move into Astoria and I just wanted to show you that. It's been happening and it will continue to happen with Innovation Queens because while ninety-two percent of all units that were built in the last ten years have been market rate and they're proposing and there are seventy-five percent of their units be bracket rate. So clearly, we're seeing a literal displacement of people who have been here for a wealthier class of people and as someone.
Isadora, I'm sorry, your time is up. Can you please wrap up your comments?
Yeah, so I just want to say that as someone who has lived in Astoria for most of her life around working-class immigrant families like my own, like it, I would just hate to be displaced by a project like Innovation Queens, which is not bringing about enough affordable housing and will cause second, like wave displacement through out other higher, like it's going to cause rents to go up in the neighborhood. Not only their own rents, but other rents, furthering displacing people who have been here and who could afford this neighborhood. So thank you for listening and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Isadora, for your testimony. Now move on to the next member of the public to testify.
Next speaker is in place. Uh, please unmute yourself, Justice Favor.
Hello, good morning. Good morning. Good morning, how you doing, Mr. President? How's everyone? Good afternoon, I apologize, I've been on all morning, my apologies. But um, good afternoon. I would like to take this opportunity to testify. My name is Justice Favor. I'm organizing, I'm a market development rep with the Labor's Union Local Seventy-Nine, the largest union construction laborers in North America. My union has over ten thousand members and majority of them are people of color. And we, eighty-five percent of us live in New York City. I'm, myself grew up in public housing throughout Queens.
I'm done, I'm done. Sorry.
Hello. Hello.
Sorry, please continue.
Um, I represent over three thousand members that actually live in, live in Queens, New York. Local Seventy-Nine supports Innovation Queens rezoning in investment that will bring long-term financial stability to Astoria and the surrounding neighborhoods. The developers have committed to building with Local Seventy-Nine union labor that provides family with health and benefit and fair wages. Hundreds of Local Seventy-Nine members live in Astoria and Long Island City. Will we actively work with our neighbors, the developers, the city government, and elected officials to ensure the project includes affordable apartments and good jobs? The project can benefit Astoria if it's built right. I believe it, it's better to have a seat at the table instead of, instead of watching it get, get built with no standards. That's why I'm proud to stand in support of Innovation Queens. Um, Mr. President, you know, they are folks that continuously complain about the housing crisis that we have in New York City, which I agree. But they also an economic crisis that, that I believe we all should agree with. It is, both are equally important. There's a two-track system. And some folks, I believe, are just playing out a structuredness that do not want to, want to progress the city along with true responsible development. One earlier folks have mentioned development that's taking place where folks, um, they believe have been pushed out or just the building that of construction that's taken place with, you know, developers that, that are not responsible, that are exploiting black and brown workers. We finally have someone that's, that has a commitment to build responsibly, to commit to building, uh, you know, inclusive workforce with people of color. So while we're here, we shouldn't just be closing the doors on building more affordable units, building responsibly with a, with a livable wage. You know, to me, this is, this is a perfect, this is a perfect situation, right? Building affordable and building with union labor. Very important, which something that hasn't happened throughout our city and which hasn't happened throughout our city, that's very important. Um, you're going to have folks that are going to continuously complain about everything, whether it's the shadows, whether it's the how, who is affordable for. But folks need to be able to work, to be able to live in this city, to be able to be able to have a career that's going to be sustainable with a livable wage. So again, we stand in solidarity with this project. Um, we willing to work with our community partners if there is room to work and grow, but we should not just push, should not just close off this uh project. Um, and I just, I just want to thank you for your time and uh, thank you for your time today.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Favors.
Next speaker, David Kilminick. Please unmute yourself.
Alrighty, thank you. Uh, thank you and thank you, Mr. Borough President. Great to see you and happy end of Pride Month. Um, so again, my name is David Kilminick. I am the uh president and CEO of the LGBT Network. Um, and uh, while I know you know this Borough President, just want to uh just quickly mention the services that our organization provides uh throughout the borough. Uh, we have anti-bullying programs in nearly every single school in Queens, HIV/STI testing advocacy. We work on hate crimes, domestic violence, intimate partner violence, trans-specific programs, support for LGBTQ immigrants, um, and of course, uh, Queens Pride, which I believe is the best pride and in the five boroughs. Our current uh, uh, community center, it's a smaller space, is in Astoria right now and we are excited to be part of the community hub, uh, to be working with other nonprofit partners and expanding our services, which I'll talk about quickly in a second. You know, Innovative Queens um approached us early on about to hear what the needs are for the LGBTQ community and how we can work together. I mean, it was something we really appreciated. Um, we did a needs assessment with the folks in Queens um to hear what was needed. Um, and they're reflected in uh the services that will be provided as part of this project with the expanded community center. Um, and the needs are great and so is the opportunity for the LGBTQ community as part of this project. So our expand, you know, by having a larger community center and being with other nonprofits um to work together, will just do a tremendous amount for the community. But those expanded services include um our Health and Human Services Program, education, including a GED program uh for our LGBTQ youth who don't feel safe at school and just drop out while we work to continue to create safer schools. Cultural and art space for LGBTQ and allied artists. Um, advocacy, an increase of uh pro bono legal needs for LGBTQ immigrants and other folks. Um, and uh, you had mentioned before an incubator. Incubator is part of our project, actually, part of our new space uh to work with LGBTQ entrepreneurs um, uh, to provide medical and mental health services onsite, which is not available at all in Queens. Um, and community space as well for other local, um, other local volunteer groups, um, including the expansion of a food pantry uh to meet the needs of those dealing with food insecurity. So in closing, I'd just like to say that this project really is truly innovative. Um, very rarely do you see nonprofit organizations uh work together or have a space to work together collaboratively. Um, and that's what this will provide and I think it will really uh move the needle for um all of Queens LGBT people and families. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll now move on to the next member of the public.
Next speaker, Jenny Dubnow. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, everybody. Um, I've lived in Queens for twenty years. Uh, Mr. Borough President, Innovation Queens should not be approved. It will bring approximately twenty-eight hundred apartments to a working-class corner of Astoria. Seventy-five percent of these units will be market rate, meaning completely unaffordable to most of us. A scanty twenty-five percent of the units are deemed affordable. But looking closely at these rents, we see that even those are frankly out of reach. A mere ten percent of the units are offered at forty percent average median income and zero at the lowest income band. This means that zero units will be affordable to most residents of nearby NYCHA houses. It also means that more than half of these so-called affordable units require incomes of fifty-six thousand dollars a year to a hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred dollars a year to even be eligible to apply for these apartments. So Innovation Queens affordability is frankly a lie and we see it. New York City has an affordable housing scarcity, not a luxury housing scarcity. Vacancy rates in New York City for units that cost below nine hundred dollars a month are less than one percent but are close to twelve percent vacancy for units above two thousand, three hundred dollars. We need more deeply affordable housing, but building more luxury units simply doesn't address our crisis. In fact, we see over and over what these massive luxury developments do to previously affordable communities like Williamsburg and Long Island City. The working-class black and immigrant residents are priced out and wealthier, whiter folks move in. Surrounding, surrounding rents always rise, both for renters and mom-and-pop businesses. Trickle-down housing just doesn't work. Innovation Queens billionaire developers tout green space, a fancy food hall, and jobs creation. But can we finally start to be skeptical of these developers tossing tiny crumbs to the community, which often don't even pan out? Our tax dollars should build truly affordable, truly open public parks and great union jobs can and should be used to build deeply affordable housing, not housing that the workers themselves cannot afford. Let's remember, a rezoning is a huge giveaway to developers. They are making a windfall of profit by building taller as they gobble up our air and light. These billionaire developers could build a hundred percent affordable and still make a modest profit. Isn't that enough for them? We're only making modest profit, we're barely surviving. Can they open their books so the public can transparently see their projected profit margins? If we, the public, are gifting them a massive rezoning, we should get a hundred percent affordable housing, period. Please reject this harmful rezoning.
Thank you for your testimony. Now move on to the next member of the public.
Next speaker, Fabiana Silvo. Is a dial-in. Please unmute yourself, Fabiana. Fabiana? Fabiana, can you speak?
Yes.
Very good. Please begin your testimony. Hello, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, hi, everyone. My name is Fabiana Silva and I live in the corner of Stanway and Broadway. I'm an immigrant from Brazil. I came straight to Astoria years ago. So I decided to move to Astoria because a friend of mine told me it was a safe, economic place to live that was full of immigrants like me. Astoria has become my home. I speak today in support of Innovation Queens. I know how hard it is to move to a new country and a new city. I didn't know English when I arrived and it was difficult to learn how to become a citizen. I didn't know where to get a job. I just knew I wanted to live in it now to this state. Innovation Queens will provide service that would, would help many immigrants like myself with partners like Jacob Hiz. The community center is the project that will be able to provide English-speaking classes and can help those and can help those uh who need it with citizenship. They can also help with teaching people uh what they need to know to be able to get jobs. So Innovation Queens will also help make jobs for a lot of people. Um, I would have wanted um of, of these things when they first moved to Astoria. So Innovation Queens um also bring a lot of people the, to the neighborhood which uh is good thing. We need more apartment for all types of people. Um, we need more peoples to also help make more money for a lot of to stories and business on it by immigrants in the neighborhood. So Astoria is full of immigrants and I'm very happy to be living in Astoria. So Innovation Queens will be good for immigrations and good for many people. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. We now move on to the next member of the public to testify.
Yes, I'd like to alert the list of speakers. Um, please prepare yourself. Um, excuse me. The next speaker will be Faraha Akhtar, followed by Kevin Kudak, then Joaquin Rabanovich. Faraha, Faraha, please begin.
Faraha?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, Fariah Akhtar.
Fariah.
Thank you. Um, so to begin with, I want to make really clear that this project will cause displacement in our community. As Jenny had previously illuminated, the vacancy rates, according to New York City's own vacancy survey uh published in May twenty twenty, shows that luxury apartments priced at twenty-three hundred and above are at twelve point sixty-four percent vacant, whereas everything below that is near or less than one percent. Um, fifteen hundred to twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two ninety-nine is at around four percent vacant. So we should not be masquerading or mis, uh, leading anyone into thinking that the housing prices is about uh, is about these luxury units. If anything, Innovation Queens units will add to the problem. It is at the core of what the issue is. We know as um, as the lead organizer at Cav for our, this chapter in Astoria, that there are over six thousand working-class Bengali people who are immigrants, who are below or at the poverty line in this community and they're not being accounted for. The main base of people that we organize are less than a half mile away from this development. So when the developers say that it is six apartments that will be impacted, we should be very clear that that is false. My own family immigrated to Astoria in the nineties and were later displaced because of high rent. Now families stay in Astoria because that is where their home is, that is where their community is. That's where elders can navigate in language and actually feel uh and live a dignified life. I also want to raise that it's important that Astoria continues to be a landing place for working-class immigrants. New immigrants come to Astoria and settle into the homes of relatives, try and find apartments for themselves. Often, they deal with that by overcrowding and other unfortunate situations, but it's where they want to be. And Innovation Queens will only raise the rents. I also would be remiss uh to not mention that unfortunately, Borough President, this hearing is incredibly inaccessible. A lot of our folks don't have access to technology that's working, uh, so they can't get on soon. And the ones that can uh aren't able to join a meeting in the middle of the day when they're at work. Uh, several of our folks, including Matt, uh, uh, Abdel and Anamul were on the call and waited for a few hours before they no longer could manage um, not getting fired and being here. Um, so people are ready to be clear that they don't want this project and that it will impact their lives negatively. And our organizing is all really within a mile radius of this project. And we are committed to making sure that this does not happen. We ask you to be on the right side of history and recommend no Innovation Queens rezoning.
Thank you for your testimony. Let me remind uh individuals, we do these hearings once a month, we're mandated by the charter. Uh, and if you cannot make this, this is a standard hearing, it's not something that doesn't happen once a month. You're more than um, uh, you can submit your testimony in writing. We do look at it just as if you're here. So uh, Vicky and I are tasked with that and that is something you can do if you cannot attend. Um, you can email bgarvey@queensbp.org or you can submit your testimony uh, by mail, uh, one-twenty dash fifty-five Queens Boulevard, Q Gardens, New York. And I'm still learning my zip code. What's my zip code?
One-one-four-two-four.
All right, got it. Um, so you can, you do have those options if you're not uh able to do it. And the same happens at the council. Um, so we do try to make these things as accessible as possible. And actually, actually, we have a better turnout online than we normally do if we did these in person in a lot of cases. Um, so thank you so much and uh if they cannot be here, you can please have them email Vicky or submit their testimony in writing. Thank you for your testimony. We now move on to the next uh individual to testify.
Next speaker will be Kevin Kudic, followed by Rakhi, excuse me, Rakim Rabanovich and Sally's Levitt.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, please begin.
Yes, all right. Thank you so much. Um, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Kevin Kudic. I am a lifelong Astoria resident. Um, I am a teacher educator in Queens and most of my students that I serve are recently arrived immigrants. And you know, the question, and I'm going to echo a lot of the points that uh many of the folks here have said about this project. Um, I kind of think about my students and ask the question, is this project going to serve them? Is it something that is affordable for the majority of my students that have come, are come from families? Is it something that is affordable for the majority of my students that have come from families that worked multiple jobs, have had to struggle during the pandemic, have had to readjust to, you know, teaching in person again? Is this a project that is equitable, that is equity-driven, that really serves them? And the answer is a resounding no. And that is why this project is something that I really cannot support. You know, I've seen, just living here, again, I grew up in Astoria. The character of the neighborhood has changed so much. And it's very clear to me that it has become just so unaffordable that, you know, like, like many of the folks here that have given numbers, and I'm not fully up to date with so many of these statistics, but just hearing on the amount of people that are rent burden, the amount of people that really are in desperate need of true, deep, affordable housing, I think that this project is really just a sham. And it's something, and it's upsetting and disconcerting that the community had to push back so many times. And, you know, our community had to basically demand that, you know, these things that should be should be really taken into consideration, no matter what the project is. So I am against this project. And like many of what people said, we need something that is truly affordable, not just something that is just surface window dressing. We need something that will cut to the heart of the issue, which is really affordable housing. And this is not just a local issue, this is a citywide issue. And it's endemic to the real systemic problem, you know, the systemic rot that we're seeing with housing and how deeply unaffordable and inaccessible it is. So that's all I'll say for today. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Kudic. We now move on to the next individual who should testify.
Next speaker, Joaquin Rabanovich.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we may. Please begin. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, Queens Borough President Richard, and good afternoon to your esteemed staff. My name is Joaquin Rabanovich, and I am 22-years resident of Astoria, New York. Before I begin, I'd like to just talk about the idea that this development the current owners of a lot of these lots that are supposedly decrepit and are actually silvestine bedrock and caulked. If you, the information is online, if you look it up, they have been sitting on these properties since 2018. So the idea that this is unused space is, by them, is currently untrue. They could have been using this space. They, you know, we could have been the vaccine distribution center. It could have been a lot of, there could have been a lot of uses currently to these spaces. And if you really truly care about the community, you would have, you would have done so right away, as soon as you took ownership of these lots. But I'm going to actually talk about a different perspective. My fellow colleagues and Astoria residents talk about affordability, burden, the transportation burden. But I am actually a resident of 22 years, but before, I was born and raised in France, in Paris. I was born in Paris and I came here to Astoria, and I've been here since 22 years. And when you walk around Paris and when you see the beautiful buildings and you wonder why, you know, how does a city maintain these buildings? Are you able to walk and see the beautiful limestone buildings, the beautiful decorations? They're not torn down and rebuilt as monstrosities of glass buildings. That's because the city of Paris and their public servants have dedicated time and effort to maintain the architectural beauty of the city. So I am against this for many other reasons, but this is a little bit different. To build 27-story buildings in the middle of a beautiful, architectural, diverse neighborhood with no more than five to six-story houses and commercial and retail spaces will alter the landscape of Astoria forever. So I urge you, Queens Borough President Richard, to stand against this project and to keep your legacy for the working class and the beauty of this neighborhood. And you have my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. We now move on to the next member of the public.
The next speaker registered is Silas Levitt, followed by Jason Hilliard and Tom Gretch. Silas, please begin.
Hello, my name is Silas Levitt, and I'm the Housing Development Coordinator at Hannock Inc. I would like to thank you for hearing my testimony today in support of the Innovation Q&amp;S Project. Hannock is a nonprofit organization founded in 1972 in Astoria. We are a city-based social service and affordable housing development organization. And for the past 20 years, we've played an ever-expanding role as a social services provider and affordable housing developer in the city of New York. Currently, the organization serves over 30,000 New Yorkers annually through our social services, providing a wide range of programs to youth, adults, and seniors. Hannock now owns and operates five full-service residences that consist of 650 affordable units in Queens. We manage four of the buildings ourselves through our spitty management program and have demonstrated expertise in the marketing, lease-up, and ongoing quality assurance and compliance of the affordable units. Through our senior residences, Hannock currently provides affordable housing to approximately 1,000 seniors. The services we provide are to use a lot in the age comfortably, stay connected, and lead healthy, fulfilling lifestyles. Our residential programs include meal services, transportation, educational workshops, and fitness-based activities. We also provide supportive services to seniors through the HPD Senior Affordable Rental Apartments and HRA Senior Affordable Tenant Services Programs. We at Hannock first met with the Innovation Q&amp;S team in the spring of 2020, when the project's partners reached out to us to hear our feedback on the proposal and to learn more about the services that Hannock provides to seniors in Astoria. Shortly after that, Hannock and the Innovation Q&amp;S team formed a partnership as both parties felt that our decades of experience operating senior affordable housing in Astoria made us the ideal organization to run Innovation Queens Senior Affordable Housing and administer the MAH units as part of the project. For the project, we'll be working as the mandatory inclusionary housing administrative agent overseeing lease-up for the affordable units. We are HPD-certified administrative agent for the MAH program. I have experience in all the necessary marketing and lease-up for the affordable units. We see as an organization an absolute need for housing, especially senior housing in New York City and in Astoria. The need is especially high and is poised to grow even higher as the years move on. We believe that the Innovation Q&amp;S project would not only create additional affordable and supportive homes for seniors, but will also integrate these residences into a larger community ripe with open space, health care facilities, and ground-floor lease spaces operated by local nonprofits and neighborhood-serving businesses. Access to affordable housing and holistic services like the ones proposed by Innovation Q&amp;S are important components of helping our seniors gracefully age in place in their neighborhoods. I would like to thank you once again for hearing my testimony and support of this project.
Thank you for your testimony.
Next speaker is Jason Hilliard. Please unmute yourself.
Jason Hilliard?
Jason, please accept the panelist's message that's been sent to you. Is he there? Okay, we'll move on to Tom. Okay. Jason, are you there? Unmute yourself, please.
Hello?
Hi, please begin your testimony.
Yes, can you hear me? Good morning, Queens Borough President Donovan Richard. My name is Jason Hilliard, Director of Government Affairs at the New York Building Congress. And I would like to take this time to thank you for the opportunity to express the Building Congress's support for the Innovation Queens project. At the height of the pandemic, unemployment in Queens was 30%, significantly composed of lower-income communities of color. The Innovation Queens project will create 5,400 much-needed jobs for the community, including 3,700 jobs during construction and 1,700 permanent jobs. With so many residents who are unable to work in the neighborhood they live in, this project will finally change that. Additionally, this development will spark $50 million in new spending to existing nearby small businesses, something that Astoria needs. Innovation Queens will create upward of 2,800 units of housing, another thing that the city desperately needs, which more than 700 units will be permanently affordable housing at deeper levels of affordability. Moreover, this development will also bring in a wide range of community services and amenities that Astoria needs, including a major community innovation hub where a non-profit organization can expand their services in Astoria. Some of these organizations include the LGBTQ network, the Floating Hospital, and more. Finally, our city is still working to economically recover from the pandemic while bracing for uncertain economic future. And this project is a step in the right direction. For these reasons, I urge you to support the Innovation Queens project. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Next speaker, Tom Gretch. Please unmute yourself. Tom, please accept the invite.
Just unmute yourself and turn the camera off.
I'm all set. Can you hear me? Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Borough President Richards. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. My name is Tom Gretch. I'm the president and CEO of the Queens Chamber of Commerce. I'm also a proud son of Astoria, as are both of my parents. I am here to testify today strongly supporting the Innovation Q&amp;S project. Post-COVID, I think it's really important for folks to know the following. The rest of our country and the world is not standing still waiting on New York City. There are a number of projects whose benefits do not come near those provided by Innovation Q&amp;S. They are being put forth and executed around the U.S. and around the world. This is a great project. This project does not require public funds to be implemented or spent. Over the coming years, both New York City and New York State will need all the private support we can garner when the once-in-a-lifetime federal funding that we're all receiving right now rises up. We need that private capital deployed here in Queens before it goes elsewhere. While vibrant, our county needs development partners that listen and work with the community. No, doesn't serve that purpose well, but input, as we've gotten from all sides, does. This development will vitalize the Steinway corridor and provide much-needed spending and excitement around our local businesses who have been struggling throughout the pandemic. Lastly, and furthermore, it'll bring 5,400 jobs to the community as well as an estimated $50 million of economic activity at existing neighborhood businesses. For these reasons and more, the Queens Chamber of Commerce, our 1,400 members, representing 150,000 Queens-based employees, wholeheartedly supports this project. I thank you and yield my time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Will the following panelists please prepare? Jim Diopoulos will be next, followed by Rena Aldrich, then Nazish Azad Tisha. Jim Diopoulos, please begin. Unmute yourself. Jim, will you please accept the panelist's invite? Now unmute yourself, please.
Hello?
Jim, please begin.
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody, Borough President and also Vicky. My name is Jim Diopoulos, and I want to just make this brief and to the point. Basically, throughout history, change and progress has always come with a price. People are always opposing change and progress. However, it happens one way or the other. So basically, the only question to us is, are we willing to accept a developer who is willing to enhance our community? Or would we like to go with individual developers who are just basically looking to cash out, build small buildings without giving any benefits to the community? So that's basically the only question we have to ask ourselves. It's going to happen one way or the other. Should we go with a developer that's going to give back to the community? Or should we wait and allow smaller builders to take over the properties and do the same things that they have been doing throughout the years, which is increase the rents and without any benefits to the community? So that's basically all I have to say. Thank you for your time, and everybody have a good day.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Rena Aldrich. Please unmute yourself. Followed by Nazish Azad Tisha, please accept your invite. Kevin Rivera, please accept your invite. Rena, please begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Rena Aldrich, and I would like to submit the following into testimony for a president. This is an op-ed written by Dominico Pinto from the Ferrari Driving School. He's the founder. For years, Astoria has been a magnet for immigrants and other working-class people trying to make it in New York. That's what made Steinway Street a place where neighbors shared meals. People came from all over to do their shopping, and merchants like us chased our version of the American dream. That was a long time ago. On Steinway here in Astoria, just like other main streets all over the city, there's been a big decline, and it started way before we were all forced to close during the pandemic. For lots of our neighbors, though, that was the final blow. It was hard watching our friends and neighbors close their stores for good, knowing the bloods, what tears they put into those businesses. Now dozens of stores up and down Steinway are vacant. Longtime merchants, newcomers, it doesn't matter, they've all gone away. And with crime going up, garbage in the streets, and everything costing more, the rest of us are left wondering if we're going to be the next to have to close forever. Lately, though, we have some hope. Hoffman Astoria Studios is joining forces with some other companies to rebuild the area where Steinway Street meets Northern Boulevard. That part of the neighborhood was never really as nice as the rest of Steinway, with mostly warehouses, parking lots, and empty buildings. Basically, there's almost no reason for most people to be there. But that can all be replaced soon by some new apartments, parks, offices, and stores that will bring more people to that end of Steinway. More people living, working, and visiting Astoria means a lot more people spending money at our businesses. And putting something new and welcoming down there means people already shopping around here will have a reason to walk down to where most of them don't go now. We've been trying to hang on for the last few years, and we want to stay here. But that's not enough. We also want to be able to grow, and now we may have that chance. We hope that it was time to vote for Innovation Queens. Our elected officials will think about us and what we've been through and what we need and vote yes. I'd also like to submit into testimony a letter from a local business owner, Brian Mithani. "My family has been the owner of Esquire Men's Wear on Steinway Street and local property owners since 1982. We urge all to vote yes to Innovation Queens. This development will not only bring new housing in, but considers affordability for residents as well. The Hoffman Astoria Studios has the history of being a good neighbor, and it's considered how to make the project site a space that is both welcoming and enhances the overall desirability of our community. I believe the development will be beneficial to business owners such as myself and my family, bringing new life and new money to be spent locally. The five blocks of a project site is currently underutilized with vacant storefronts and not a lot of reason for the community to go there. By supporting and saying yes to Innovation Queens, our neighborhood will now have even more to offer, existing and new residents alike. Thank you for your consideration, Borough President, and please say yes to Innovation Queens." Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Our next speaker is Nazish Azad Tisha, followed by Kevin Rivera. Nazish, please accept your invite. Kevin Rivera, please prepare. Followed by Onadita Sakir Onadi. Please accept your invite. Do we have Nazish? Kevin Rivera. Please accept your invite. Onadita Sarkar Onada, please accept your invite. Navid Khan. Navid Khan.
It looks like we have some folks being promoted from attendees to panelists.
I see Kevin Rivera.
Okay. Kevin Rivera, please unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Hello, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Kevin Rivera, and I am a Queens resident. I would like to submit the following statements of support that have been submitted to the Borough President's office and to the record. Dear Mr. Donovan Richards, my name is Ally Bader, and I am the owner of a luxury design furniture and have been here since two thousand and two. I am urging you to say yes to Innovation Queens. The project um, site has been dormant with many vacant storefronts. It is mostly unused. The addition of more affordable housing and public space will positively impact my business by bringing new people to spend money where they live and work locally. Additionally, Kaufman Astoria Studios has a longstanding relationship with neighbors and businesses, and Innovation Queens will boost our economy while making the area even more desirable. Sincerely, Ally Bader. Dear Mr. Donovan Richards, I am the owner of Esquire Menwear and have been operating right here in Astoria on Steinway Street since nineteen eighty-two. I urge you to vote yes to Innovation Queens. This development will not only bring in new housing, but considers affordability for residents as well. The Kaufman Astoria Studios has a history of being a good neighbor and has considered how to make the project site a space that is both welcoming and enhances overall desirability of our community. I believe development, I believe that the development will be beneficial for um, for, to business owners as bringing myself new life and money and to be spent locally. The five blocks of the project site is currently underutilized with vacant storefronts, and there is really no reason for our community to go there. By supporting and saying yes to Innovation Queens, our neighborhood will now have even more to offer, existents and existing and new residents alike. Thank you for your consideration, and please say yes to Innovation Queens. Sincerely, Frank Edhany.
Dear Mr. Donovan Richards, my name is Victor Ger- Gerschel, um, owner of Fulmer S located right on Steinway Street. I am writing in support of Innovation Queens. For many years, this area has been vacant, and it's time to revitalize this dormant area. Local business owners need the addition of new people to the area. This project will not only create more jobs, but it will create public, more public space, encouraging people to spend money locally where they both live and work. Thank you for your consideration, and please vote yes to Innovation Queens. Thank you so much and have a great day.
Thank you for your testimony.
Excuse me. Onadita Sarkar Onidi. Please unmute yourself. Navid Khan, you are following Onadita. Then Kevin Foley, followed by Kate O'Conners. Do we have Ona- Onadita? Onadita's trying to promote. Navid Khan, please accept your, your invitation to panelist. Onadita, please unmute yourself and please begin.
Navid, I see you.
Navid Khan, please unmute yourself. Begin testimony. Thank you.
Hello, guys. Um, hi, uh, my name is David Khan, and I'm a Queens resident and an outreach ambassador for Innovation Queens. I would like to submit the following statements of support that have been submitted to the Borough President's office and to the record. But first, I want to note, in response to the previous comments regarding our outreach team, I am a Queens community member. I work on this project because I fully support it, and I take offense to any insu- insinuation otherwise. Onto the letters. Dear, uh, Mr. Donovan Richards, I am writing to urge you to say yes to Innovation Queens Astoria. My name is Richard Plush, and I am the owner of Sha- uh, Shat Steinway, a four-generation family-owned paint, wall-covering, window-treatment, and hardware store located right on Steinway Street. We have been serving the community from our location for over seventy years and Greater New York since eighteen ninety-six. Kaufman Astoria Studios has been a longtime good neighbor and has a history of working with the community and small businesses. There is a need for more affordable housing and open public space, and Innovation Queens provides for both. Currently, the area is mostly surface lots and vacant storefronts. This is not the best use for this area. If this development is approved, it will jumpstart Astoria's economy, bring new people to spend money locally where they live and work. Thank you for your consideration, and please vote yes to Innovation Queens. Sincerely, Richard Plush. Uh, secondly, uh, Dr., dear Ms. Donovan, dear Mr. Donovan Richards, I am writing in support of Innovation Queens. I work at Luxury Furniture on Steinway Street, and for many years, this area has been vacant, and it's time to revitalize this dormant area. Local business owners need the addition of new people to the area. This project will not only create more jobs, but it will also create more public space, encouraging people to spend money locally where they both live and work. Thank you for your consideration, and please vote yes to Innovation Queens. Sincerely, John Ristro- uh, Restro, sorry. Dear Borough President Donovan Richards, I'm a local business owner and have been operating Victor's Villa Furniture for twenty-three years. Business owners have been, have seen the post-COVID decline in foot traffic. Innovation Queens represents a step in the right direction in vital- revitalizing a once-bustling area. Our neighborhood needs the new jobs, and this development will bring in addition to maximizing foot traffic for existing businesses. This is a community-focused plan that will benefit those that live and work here. We need more open space, and this project will add more than two acres of lush landscaping and trees, in addition to much-needed new residential units. I hope that you will vote yes to Innovation Queens. Sincerely, Victor Zadea. Um, thank you. My name is David Khan, and please say yes to Innovation Queens. Have a nice day.
Thank you for your testimony.
Our next speaker available is Kevin Foley. Please unmute yourself and begin testimony.
Hello, um, thank you, Borough President, uh, and the staff there. Uh, I want you to know I was born and raised in Queens in a working-class family, and I'm writing to, uh, or speaking to voice my support for Innovation Queens Astoria. I'm a small business owner and manager, um, on Steinway Street. We started our b- our business over a hundred years ago, uh, making cast irons of furniture and, um, a hardware store. During this time, we've been active in the community to better the quality of life and support local business. And we are delighted that our area has a great reputation as a diverse and welcome community. There are issues, but however, there are issues that need to be addressed. Foremost is the need for affordable hu- housing and senior and affordable housing. Additionally, and this point has been brought up to us time and again, the lack of green and open space in our area. Those who live here must travel to Astoria Park or Long Island City to find an attractive place to gather and play in the open air. I believe quality of life needs to be improved in our area, and I think Innovation Queens is an important step towards addressing some of these needs. It is widely thought the area in que- in, in question is in need of improvement. Uh, I point to the dilapidated dairy bu- buildings. I'm old enough to remember when there were a lot of dairies in, in Queens, and that was one of them. So if you go over there, you'll see that there are cows and other things on those warehouses. But they're, uh, they're, they're dilapidated, and they're not, those streets are not, uh, of benefit to, um, to our community. I believe that innovation will, uh, develop attractive gathering spaces. And some of these things, and I want to mention this because it's something I was involved in, we have tried to have, um, uh, what do you call it? A farmer's market, and we've struggled over the years to do that. And one of the reasons why we haven't been able to get it is because, um, there's not an open space for it. And we were delighted to hear that Innovation Queens would be able to provide space to do that. Additionally, uh, as David had mentioned, and earlier, um, the idea of an LGBT community center is something that's, uh, dear to my heart, and, uh, it, it'll service the large and underserviced, um, Astoria community of that, of that, um, group of people. And I s- I sincerely believe that Innovation Queens will be a positive in addition to our community, and I urge you to support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speakers will be in this order, Danal Cogdell, followed by Corinne Haynes and Infinite George. Danal Cogdell, unmute your microphone and please begin your testimony.
Uh, yes, greetings, uh, Borough President. Uh, thank you for having us meeting. Um, yeah, so I have issues with, uh, this initial plan. I mean, when you look at Innovation Queens, their website, it says that it's a community-driven plan. Well, I am a faith leader. I help Astoria Church on thirty foot, Thirty-Fifth Street. And the communication has been not great. We haven't been informed. Um, I mean, the lady acknowledged that in the beginning of the presentation, apologizing about that, and this has been going on, this, this, this plan has been going on for years. Um, and so it is, from my perspective, it hasn't been a community-driven plan. Not the community here, the people here. I, I don't see a high demand for it here. And that's a problem, and I, another, another gentleman mentioned that it's been responsible, and so I, I don't think that's responsible. And I just, you know, I'm all for advancing, you know, the community, adding new things, but just the scale of this is, is problematic. And, and given the communication problems, given the, the changing of, you know, stipulations of what's, what's gonna be a part of it, what's not gonna be a part of it, and I'm just concerned about the accountability if this is approved. You know, what is gonna hold them accountable to doing the things that they say they're going to do in terms of the thirty percent AMI or, you know, the, the, the union jobs? Um, as we know, uh, developers, uh, don't always keep their word, um, when they are given the green light. So I, I think that's problematic. I, I think that, um, seventy percent, seventy-five percent of it being a luxury apartment, uh, twenty-five percent um, being affordable housing, and again, affordability is not really affordable. Um, and I think, you know, there are some good things that are coming, as people are mentioning, some jobs, some businesses might want it, but I think the damage is far greater than the good that will come from this if it is approved. There'll be far more displacement. Rent is already burdened. I am, me and my wife moved out of it. I'm, I'm, you know, my church is in Astoria. I've been in Astoria for years, but we moved out and we, because we couldn't afford the, the rent price already, you know, and, and so many of our congregants are rent burdened. And I just don't think this is a solution. Um, and especially the way it's, the way it's building, um, it's very problematic to me. And, um, you know, I think, I think we can do better, and I think we should lean on the greater good and listen to the community that's living here. Uh, thank you for your time. I yield the rest of it.
Thank you for your testimony.
Our next registered speaker is Corinne Haynes. Please accept your, um, your invitation to panelist, followed by Infinite George. You as well, please accept your, your invitation to panelist. Corinne, please, um, unmute yourself and begin your testimony. Thank you. Corinne, you may begin your testimony.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you. Yes, we hear you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. Um, Borough President Donovan Richards, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Corinne Haynes. I am a lifetime resident here at Queensbridge Houses. I'm also the resident association president. At March, I've been a leader in my community for over thirty years. And I am supporting this project, um, like many of the residents that I've been canvassing myself, uh, in the recent months at the meetings, just giving them information and supporting the information, the presentation that were given to them with some, um, answers to some questions on a regular basis. We are in, um, excited about change. And I don't think change is always for everybody, but change is good. We are, um, we need options to the standards of the housing conditions that we currently live in, and I think that this project brings that opportunity to a lot of residents that currently live in NYCHA. I'm been an advocate, like I said, for years, and the affordable housing in Western Queens is a need, not so much a desire. So I would like to, um, offer this letter of support in, um, for the Innovation Queens rezoning, and I do believe that the project is a step in the right direction, is not a solution to affordable housing, but I do believe that it's a step in the right direction. Thank you again for hearing me and for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Um, the following speakers may please accept your, your promotion to panelist. Danley Rodriguez, followed by Diana Limon- Limongi, then Reverend Hassan Clark. Please accept your panelist, and will you begin? Unmute yourself and turn on your camera. Thank you.
Um, good afternoon, Mr. President and the panelists. Uh, my name is Anthony George. I'm a local seventy-nine union member, and I'm also a lifelong resident of the Queensbridge Houses. Um, I would like to show my support for Innovation Queens for a few reasons. One being, as a union member, I was able to change my state of living. Although I don't longer live in the long Queensbridge area, I may go for home in Long Island City because of the union. I'm also a reentry member, and I'm one of them kids that's from the neighborhood, um, where I didn't have a place to go because the neighborhood was changing, but the union allowed me on permanent lease from prison to change my life exponentially. Here we have a developer willing to work with the community, to work with the people of the community, and everybody's not gonna get their way. We gotta give and take a little, and it helps for many reasons. It helps the ones with crime. Like, like the president, uh, Mr. President said earlier, are you gonna do this for the community? A lot of people have valid reasons, but I'm thinking from a, I was one of them kids that, that, that drove the crime rate up in the area. I'm not proud of it, but that was a product of my environment. So that's why I come back to these meetings to show them that it is possible. Change is possible, but it comes from with developers like this. Now, how we get a hundred percent affordability, we take the five hundred, six hundred that they offer, and that's, that's not public money. Then the next one comes, they build again, we take another two hundred. But we have to realize that we are changing as a society. This was the diverse, the most diverse neighborhood that I ever grew up in, probably the motion city, and it's changed. It's not the same. A gallon of milk is not the same as it was twenty years ago. Understand everybody, but it's gonna help jobs in perpetuity, it's gonna help union jobs. These are accredited apprenticeship programs that changed the lives of many kids in that neighborhood exponentially, including myself. I go back there, advocate for them. Um, you know, school is not for everyone. Uh, it, it is for me. I'm, I'm permanently on track to finish my degree, but not for anybody. It's, it's the union that which will change that. Uh, 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 it's, it creates livable way, and another thing will just help with the, with the crime. That's what I have to say. Thank you for listening, and please vote yes to Innovation Queens.
Thank you for your testimony.
Next speaker, Danley Rodriguez. Please unmute yourself and begin testimony.
Hey, y'all, can you hear me? What's up? My name is Danley Rodriguez. I'm a lifelong Astoria resident. Born and raised in Astoria, went to the public schools here. I am an attorney. I am a first-generation Dominican-American, and I have been displaced from my home countless times here in Astoria, Queens. You know, two things have been going on. You know, two things have been going up throughout the trajectory of my life in this community. And there's been these new luxury buildings and the rent. I grew up on Crescent Street and Hoy Avenue. Where the rent was eight hundred dollars for a two-bedroom apartment in a private townhouse on Crescent and Hoy. Eight hundred dollars in nineteen ninety-two. By two thousand and eight, the rent went to eighteen hundred dollars. Put that into perspective, eight hundred to
I think we lost you a little bit.
Eighteen hundred dollars. And throughout that entire entire time. Messing up. Give me one second. Throughout that entire time, the only thing that was going up were these luxury buildings up and down Twenty-first Street. And my parents could not find a home. If it weren't for Section Eight, I would still not be living in New York City. So this myth the housing stock for luxury apartments is going to bring down the rent is nonsense. Just the other day at the community board meeting, I was talking to one of the small business owners right across the street, and they were telling me how there was a landlord who increased the rent of their tenants up five hundred dollars because the surrounding areas, the rent, they saw that the rent was twenty-five hundred dollars for. So the idea that increasing the housing stock through luxuries is going to reduce the 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 rent amount is nonsense. It's not true. These landlords are opportunists. They're looking to increase the money. I've been looking at Street Easy this entire time, trying to look for a home, and you can't find a one-bedroom. That's for two-point-two K. Now transitioning to Innovation Queens specifically, why not one hundred percent affordable housing? Why can't we do one hundred percent affordable housing? I want to see the books, right? Revolutionary Bill Hicks said, "The definition of love is to increase the spiritual, emotional, and mental well-being of others." This project does not love our community because it does not intend to promote the well-being of our community. It intends to profit off the 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 beauty of our community. Right? It's not looking to make sure that we have affordable living. So I urge you to vote no on this project. It does not benefit our community.
Thank you for your testimony. Next person? I think Lisa, you're on mute.
Apologies. Next speaker, Diana Lemongi.
Hi, good afternoon, I think already, yeah? My name is Diana Lemongi. I was born and raised here in Astoria, Long Island City, and I've lived here for the majority of my life. I am proud to serve on Community Board One. I'm a parent advocate and a public school parent. I want to share that when my parents arrived here, my mother worked in a factory, my dad worked in the garment industry. And today, my dad is seventy-six, he's still working. He is a union man, but unfortunately, that kind of family today cannot afford to get an apartment in Astoria. It used to be that a place, Astoria used to be a place where immigrant families and working families could start a family and live here. And that's no longer the case. We need housing, but that kind of housing matters, right? If you build housing that is too, that is unaffordable, where are these families going to go? I want to address something I said earlier, that the goal for this project is for people who could live here and work here. We are working professionals and we are telling you that we cannot afford to live here at the regular market rates that are being proposed. So there's not enough affordable housing and the and the rates are just too high. I know so many families in this community that are working professionals. Some of them worked in unions and they are terrified that if their landlord says, "We just heard a story, rent's being raised five hundred dollars, working families cannot afford a five hundred dollar hike in rent." We have childcare costs, we have, everything is going up, like there's no way that working families can afford this. So unless you're ultra-rich, you're, those are the only people that are going to be able to afford four thousand dollars, forty-five hundred dollars for a three-bedroom apartment. This is literally going to change socioeconomic of Astoria. It's going to change the racial makeup of Astoria because the stats have already been shared on this call, so I'm not going to waste time talking about that. But you know, at our community board meeting, they're trying to pit one group against the other, right? If you're against this project, you're not for unions. And it's not about that. I am pro-union. I grew up in a union home. I'm grateful for unions. They help people get living wages and, you know, good jobs. But the people that are saying that they're pro-union and they want this built, you're not going to be able to live here. And I just want to make that really clear that, like we heard from teachers who have said, "We cannot live here on, you know, at paying these rents." We've heard it time and time again. So I I'm very worried that this is really going to radically change and push so many families out. And that is why I am urging and hoping that you vote no, President Richard, on this project because we need more affordable housing. Real affordable housing, not only in name for for the the families. No, I something else I just wanted to mention briefly, you know, I'm a public school parent. The school that's next to the the proposed zone is PS one sixty-six. That school has over a thousand students. You can, you know, talk to parents that are already in that school. There's no outside space for that school. It is a school that is overcrowded, that has been overcrowded traditionally. So there has been no outreach, I'm sure, to that school. And and I think it's it's not true to say that it's going to be fine and this influx of people can just come and put their kid in school. We don't need to build. So there hasn't been thought to transportation. There's a lot of traffic already on Northern Boulevard. I mean, it's just, it's I have no words, as you can see, for how critical it is to really think about what this would do to our communities, to our working families. And when I say working families, I don't mean low income. I mean, we already heard before that low-income people Yeah, you, low income, we already heard that if you're making thirty percent or under, I what is it, AMI, you wouldn't even qualify to apply for the only seven hundred and eleven apartments that are here, right? So there are so many problems that so many of my fellow people here doing testimony, you know, have said, so I won't go on any further. But yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. And I'm not trying to be rude. We have like a hundred people that want to testify.
I understand. I've been here since so thank you. I will send in my comments as well.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll go to the next individual who wants to testify.
Next, next speaker is Reverend Hassan Clark. Please unmute yourself.
Reverend Clark? See him. Reverend Clark, do you want to unmute? Oh, I see you now. Okay. All right. We don't hear you yet. We see you, we don't hear you.
I think they have it wrong.
There you go. No, we hear you. I heard you just now. Okay, all right. We'll move on to the next individual and come back. Lisa, you're muted.
Excuse me, Christian Gonzalez.
Hello. Hi, can you hear me? Great. Hi, everyone. My name is Christian Gonzalez. I'm here today because as someone who was born and raised in Queens, as someone who is a lifelong renter, I've experienced firsthand how luxury developments like these only serve to displace families like my own. I am tired of our community having to constantly defend ourselves against real estate developers who are selling us the lie that in order to get the things we deserve, like park space and open space, that we need to sell out our communities. Let's be very clear. Innovation Queens does not have our community's best interests at heart. This is an immigrant, working-class community where twenty-five percent of us live below the poverty line, eighty-seven percent of us are renters. Seventy percent of the nearby residents are rent burdened. Our immigrant, working-class, black and brown community is at the highest risk of displacement. And when you look at these numbers, the majority of this community will not even be able to afford the most affordable units in this complex, let alone the luxury-rate studios starting at three thousand dollars a month. Make no mistake, this is a billion-dollar development backed by billionaires to benefit billionaires at the cost of our community. The less than seven hundred and fifty affordable units this project proposes, out of the twenty-eight hundred they plan on building, are not only truly unaffordable and out of reach for our neighbors, but do nothing to solve our housing crisis. Pushing up to thirty percent AMI is not enough, and it certainly isn't a solution for NIDIA residents, where the average income is twenty thousand dollars. I have also seen how the specific developer has been working in this community. It's only created tension and divide. I was there weeks ago when the room was packed with business owners and organizations that have been bought out and with folks who said they were paid to testify. I've seen the aggressive canvassing of NIDIA tenants without real transparency around the reality that this will do nothing to serve them. And I was there at the CB One hearing where our community was met with counter protests and speakers with pre-recorded chants to drown out the voices of our community. And also meeting other people who said that they were paid to be there on behalf of Innovation Queens. This is certainly not a developer that I trust, certainly not a developer that I believe will follow through on any promises made today, especially since we have seen again and again today that they have dodged questions about increasing affordable housing, that they have not made definitive commitments on who will have access to community space or how it will be used, and the number and price of parking spaces, which are currently double the number of residents that would have access to affordable units. Finally, if we look at studies, study after study tries to prove that luxury developments will drive down prices and somehow serve communities. The studies are inconclusive. In many cases, it drove up prices of nearby housing displacing many people. So we know that that is certainly a lie and there's no evidence to prove to prove that this luxury development will do anything for our community. So I urge you to please vote no on this development. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Next speaker, John Uske. Please accept the panelist's invite. So we can promote you. You may unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Okay. Okay. Hi, my name is John Uske. And I currently work as a supervisor in the MTA. I grew up in New York. I grew up in Brooklyn. I moved to Astoria twenty years ago. I once was homeless streets of Brooklyn. I graduated forty-seven trade schools. I got three full college degrees. I came to the MTA because there is no future in the trades. I could become a plumber, electrician, a carpenter. I got an MBA degree in banking and finance, but I joined the MTA and my job is to install the computers for seven trade so that we can run them closer together because the capacity is being stretched to the limits. Because you guys keep on building more and more buildings and we can't pack all these people onto the trains. There is absolutely no consideration for the buses, the subways, the roadway, the sidewalk infrastructure from this project for the surrounding community. This should not be built. I've lived in Astoria for twenty years and there was another person that spoke that he was from Paris. And I've walked block after block after block and I've seen beautiful old houses destroyed and these sliver condominium buildings put up for rich people. I don't see any any local people that could afford these buildings. So in light of the, everything I said, the union people, they don't, they're telling you, okay, you're going to get great jobs and everything. But what they don't understand is once the project is built, there's no more painting, there's no more wallpaper, there's no more sheetrock. You're let go. And if you can, and where are you going to work? I don't know. But the developer is done. So this project should not be built. It will destroy what's left of this community. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for your testimony.
Next speaker, Amanda Vasquez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Okay. Hi, I am Amanda Vasquez. I've been living here my entire life. A lot of changes have happened in this area, some good, some bad. I'm not against business. I'm not against, you know, new residents and everything, but this project is just way too much. Everything here is one to three floors. If you look around, it's all one to three floors, small mom-and-pop businesses. They're proposing twenty-seven-story floors. I mean, it's going to look ridiculous. It's not cohesive with the environment. On top of that, no changes have been made to the traffic. You know, I saw the report. It said it's going to be increased traffic. The air quality is going to get worse. Our schools are overcrowded. I know this. I'm a parent of District Thirty. I also am an educator at District Thirty, so I see it. There's a waitlist for schools already. I don't know how adding seven thousand more residents is going to help with the waitlist we already have. No changes in infrastructure have happened so far. So the subways and buses, as he said, are already packed and you add more people to it. I've seen no changes in that. I think it's a terrible idea. And on top of that, now we have inflation. So I don't think people are going to be looking for luxury apartments in this environment now. I mean, how are they going to afford it? People are just going to leave. And you're going to have a bunch of empty rentals and studios sitting there. And who's going to foot the bill for that? I've seen small dry cleaners go out of business already. The hairstylist at Thirty-Fifth Avenue just left because they already know the rents are going to increase. They want to make a windfall here. It's not going to do anything good for the community. And I'm against it completely. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I saw Reverend Clark come back on.
Yes, he is there. Reverend, can you unmute yourself and please begin?
Yes, my name is Reverend Bobby Moore. I serve as the overseer of the Astoria Baptist Church located right on Twenty-first Street in Astoria, Queens. That church has served this community for over sixty years. I myself have served there for over twenty years. And I'm watching the community change as everyone else. I believe this project will be good because it does give some percentage of affordable housing to our residents that will be able to also excel and yet still live in the community. Many of our congregation had to leave the community as we preach and teach prosperity, as we preach and teach growth because they couldn't afford to live. At least this particular project gives a certain amount of inclusion, and I believe it'd be a benefit to our community. So I am in support of it. I also believe that it will also encourage and be a space for our young people to grow. So thank you for hearing me. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this particular consortium on today. And to our Borough President, take care. God bless you. We are praying for your entire team. Thank you much.
Thank you, Reverend Clark. You're muted.
Anna Contreras, next speaker. Anna, please accept your promotion to panelist. Please unmute and begin testimony.
All right, I see you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Give me one second. Hi, my name is Anna. I just want to say thank you for giving us the time and space to talk about about this project and about what we believe in. After COVID, I think that we all took a big hit after COVID. And I believe that we are very fortunate that a project like this is coming our way and that we have the opportunity to keep growing and expanding our neighborhood. Astoria is a great place. A lot of people want to be a part of it. And I think that this will alleviate the very high demand that our neighborhood has already at the moment. We as people always want to, you know, be the best version of ourselves and we want to always keep improving. And I think that you know, we have a really big opportunity to do this for our neighborhood. This means more people for our local businesses, more spacing for incoming neighbors, spaces for nonprofit organizations, retail startups, and aspiring local entrepreneurs. This project is going to This project is gonna be replacing blocks that are currently parking lots and warehouses and instead of that, it could be a new housing space that is very much needed, space for businesses and also jobs that are needed all the time, especially after COVID. Someone mentioned before that innovations in New York City are already happening and taking place in Queens. So I'd like to support that point and back him up on that. It's already happening and this specific innovation is providing extra benefits for the community. It's I someone mentioned before how great it will be for the LGBTQ center. You know, we live in a time where this is very much needed and it's always gonna be needed. I understand change is very difficult and uncomfortable sometimes, but it change is already happening all around and this innovation is providing multiple benefits for the neighborhood. So I vote yes for this innovation. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Thank you for your testimony.
Next speaker, Alex Melissio.
Alex, I see you. Alex has been all right. There you go. Thank you.
Alex, please begin your testimony.
Yes, bear with me one second. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alex Melissio and I'm testifying as representative of Urban Upbound. I am speaking today in support of calendar item four, Innovation Queens. Urban Upbound is dedicated to breaking cycles of poverty in New York City, public housing and other low-income neighborhoods. We provide undisturbed youth and adults with the tools and resources needed to achieve economic prosperity and self-sufficiency through six comprehensive integrated programs. Employment Services, College Access and Youth Development, Financial Fitness and Affordable Housing, Tax Prep and Income Support Services, Worker Cooperative Development and Business Innovation, and Financial Inclusion Services anchored by the Urban Upbound Federal Credit Union. Innovation Queens presents Astoria and Long Island City with an opportunity for affordable and senior housing, below-market rate space for nonprofit organizations and thousands of jobs, including a commitment to prioritize the contracting of minority, women and locally owned business enterprises. We at Urban Upbound look forward to using these opportunities before us to augment our programming and reach additional New Yorkers in need. I would like to thank Borough President Richards and his team for hearing my testimony today. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Our next speaker is Anju Rupanchardi. Followed by Connie Murray, forgive me. Then Eric Benham. Connie Murray, please accept your your panelist promotion.
Hi.
Can you hear me? Begin your testimony.
Thank you. I my name is Connie Murray. I live three blocks away from this proposed zone or this proposed project. And I want to address how many people on here have referred to this neighborhood as disgusting and dilapidated and unpopulated. And I hope President Richards that you can know what a great community is here. This is a community that has census tracts that run about twenty five percent, twenty to twenty five percent living at or below the poverty level. They are living simple but comfortable lives because of the affordable housing that does exist here. I wish that this was a project that would build upon that affordability because again, this is a vibrant neighborhood. Come over at eight PM on a summer night at Playground Thirty Five, it is packed. This is an amazing place to live. Tracy Capune, you said that you don't know what other outreach to do to this community, but you have not done any social media posts on public meetings. There've been a lot of Instagram ads, but there has been no real outreach and to the point where our council member Julie Wong has noticed how limited. It's almost as if you don't want the public to show up. This is a ten-year construction site that would serve Nebraska better than Queens, New York. The first World Trade Center took nine years to construct. After the tragic events of nine eleven, the replacement of the Freedom Tower took eight years to construct. This thing is going to take ten years. It is not appropriate in any way for our thriving, vibrant community. Those properties should not have been hoarded and speculated. They should have been organically developed. And it is the developers' responsibility that that has happened. Steinway Billiards is an extraordinary, a local business that's being pushed out. Desi Barbecue, another great business which is being pressured out. Again, the the developers are saving the movie theater, which is fantastic, and PC Richards, which is fantastic, but there are a lot of businesses which are going to be replaced. As well, we have the incredible Food Bazaar. We do not need another grocery store. The Food Bazaar is the bomb. It serves this community, again, our low-income working community. I wish this would have been something that was twelve stories, organically built with a lot more affordable housing. And I beg you, President Richards, to reject this plan as it is in its current state. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony and I I am always in Astoria. Alrighty, we'll go to the next individual who would like to testify.
Our next speaker registered is Eric Benham, Modern Spaces. Please unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Do you hear me?
Yes, please begin.
Good afternoon, Borough President. My name is Eric Benham. I'm from Modern Spaces. I am working on this project, Innovation Queens. I'm also a lifelong Queens resident. I was born in Queens, raised in Queens, grew up in Queens, never actually left Queens. I was born to immigrant parents. My father was a mechanic. And I've been living in Western Queens with my two kids for the last sixteen years. I'm here in support of this project. My kids play at the playground over here. We are in Astoria all the time and we really in support of this project. I've worked with Kaufman Organization for over ten years and they are really one of the one of the true organizations who are committed to working with the community. They're involved with so many different organizations and nonprofits throughout Queens and they do contribute a lot to Queens. I would like to also address Doreen earlier, who said we are in a housing crisis. I mean, we are in a housing crisis. There's a shortage of housing. The reason you are seeing reports of people waiting online for hours to go visit an open house is because we don't have enough housing. We need more housing and that's what that's what will drive down the prices. Earlier, a guy named Danley spoke about the prices on Street Easy. The reason those prices are on Street Easy is because, again, there's a shortage of housing. Two years ago, during the pandemic, half the city left, prices went down forty percent. The reason prices went down forty percent because there's a lot more housing than actually people. Now that the people came back, the prices are going back up. And we need more housing to level off those prices. In addition, there's gonna be seven hundred and fourteen rent-stabilized affordable housing that is really truly affordable. And I think seven hundred and fourteen affordable housing rather than empty lots right now and nothing is 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 truly something that is could be used right now. Again, I'm speaking in support of Innovation Queens. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker order is Tao Rabstuchin, followed by Erica Dillon. And then we'll have Mike Anderson. Tao, please unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Hi, my name is Talaristopchin and I'm a lifelong resident of Astoria. I live on Twenty First Street and Thirty Fourth Avenue and I'm strongly opposed to the Innovation Queens development. I'm going to repeat like some of the key points that other community members have made, but I think it's really important just to just to demonstrate how many residents of Astoria are against the development. And so, like many others have said, there are many ways in which Innovation Queens development will harm the community in Astoria. But mostly concerns me is the proposed housing. Like, yeah, again, like many others had said, seventy five percent of the proposed housing was mostly comprised of singles and studios starting at thirty one hundred dollars. It's completely unaffordable and ridiculous. It inevitably drives up rent across Astoria and also prioritizes individual housing over multi-person households, which threatens housing opportunities for families. And then also, like many others have said, the twenty five percent proposed so-called affordable units are just the minimum that are required and the lowest MIH option is not accessible to the average NITIA and lower-income resident. Proposed housing really does not meet the needs of meet the needs of Astoria. And it's absolutely despicable that developers are gonna be profiting so much while harming and displacing residents of Astoria. One other quick thing I want to say is that some speakers noted how Innovation Queens will create Queens will create a community space for the LGBT network. I don't know too much about it, but I'm very suspicious about how that they will be serving the queer and trans community when they might be displacing a lot of queer and trans people. It just feels, yeah, like who are they going to be serving? And so for those reasons, I'm calling on Queens Borough President Donovan Richards to oppose Innovation Queens development. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, next we have Erica Dillon or Dillon.
It's just Dillon. I'm like the whitest shade of white you get. Oh, gosh, I don't know why I'm so nervous. First of, Mr. Richards, thank you for taking the time to do this. I know this is wild. This is very Parks and Recreation realness. I am opposed to Innovation Queens and its current proposal, but I do think it's too easy for these kinds of things to end up being a yes or no, two sides, where people don't really consider like what would it take for me as someone who's opposed to it to consider this project as being good for the neighborhood? Because we do need more housing. It's a question though of is the housing housing that lets the residents who live here and make this community vibrant stay in the neighborhood? Or is it a level of housing where you're preventing that vibrant community from being here? People picked this neighborhood because of the immigrant community, the businesses and the safe families that made this neighborhood seem like a great place to live. When I moved here in two thousand and five, I picked this neighborhood because of how involved the community board was with the residents because I grew up with a dad who was a township supervisor for the community that I lived in. Seeing residents like this come out and speak is what's important. So we have to make sure when we hear these residents oppose it because there's not enough affordable housing, that we do something to promote that. And I think it's really compelling how many people have spent their day, you know? I'm logging on to Zoom at nine in the morning. Well, the longest Zooms I did during the pandemic were for Dungeons and Dragons and they weren't even this long, you know, what are you gonna do? But I just think that if this is gonna move forward, we need more concessions from the Innovation Queens project. We need them to do more than the legal minimum and I want you, Mr. Richards, to hold them accountable for it. When you battled with Jimmy Van Bramer for the Democratic nomination for Queensborough President, one of the things you told him was it's sometimes being unpopular is part of your responsibility when you are in power. And I hope that you continue that because that means both ways. If we need new development, we also need you to put Innovation Queens to the test. Demand more affordable units from them. If they're gonna tell us it's gonna be union members working on it, we need promises and penalties. So that if they don't make good on what they're giving us to make us consider them, that there is a repercussion for that. Like, we need those assurances because that's what makes this actually a community thing. And that's the difficult decision that's at your feet. Is how do you hold them to the task and to the promises they're making to us? And I think like things like non-union, making sure they use union construction, making sure that they support units in the neighborhood and and making sure that like they do these kinds of things that they're talking about are really important and you're gonna be the one who's in charge of that. One last point, if Queens is gonna bear the disproportionate burden of new luxury building in this city, then Queens needs to get taxes from the city for it. And that's also at your feet to make sure that happens for the community. Thank you all.
Thank you, Erica, for your testimony. I don't take that lightly. I think I think you hit on a lot of key points. I have tried not to speak too much today because I really do believe leaders need to listen. But I think you made a lot of good points and you sort of could look to my track record in Far Rockaway where I was the former council member where we were able to hold developers' feet to the fire and that's called leadership. It's not about rhetoric. It's about ensuring that the things the city and developers say they're gonna do, if we're engaged as we're supposed to be as elected officials and following through on the very commitments that people say they're gonna make, then those things happen. And the public also has a responsibility here as well. It's not just the elected officials. Each and every one of us holding each other accountable in these spaces. I've not weighed in one way or another on this project as of yet because I wanted to do a lot more listening, but absolutely the job of leadership sometimes is not popular. And I'm not saying this relating to anything to this application. When we did a hundred percent affordable in Far Rockaway, people were against it. But we did the right thing. And yes, there were political repercussions for that. But leaders are called at this moment to lead. So I really appreciate your comments and statements on today. Alrighty, we're now gonna go to the next individual for testimony.
I'm going to give the list of next speakers, starting with Mike Anderson. Please accept your panelist's invite. Followed by Reverend Gilbert Pickett, Jeff Sitomer and Renzo Ramirez. Please accept your speaker, your panelist invitations. And I will go to Mike. If you have accepted, please unmute and begin your testimony. Mike Anderson. I'll move on. Reverend Gilbert Pickett, please unmute and begin your testimony.
Thank you and good afternoon. Hello, Lisa. And good afternoon, Mr. President. Thank you for this opportunity. I am calling in support of this project, knowing that, yes, the affordable housing is needed and that's very important. Even though there might be a minimal amount of affordable housing, but we definitely need that in Queens as a product of Corona's umhurst Queens, pastoring now for twenty-four years in Corona, having congregants who live in Astoria, Long Island City, Woodside, Ravenswood. They need housing and not only is housing important and a priority as far as this project is concerned, we are also looking at the jobs. We are looking at the apprenticeship program. We are looking at the community service that's gonna be given to Urban Upbound and other organizations. So this is definitely a worthwhile project. We know that New York City is a city that is growing and on the move. Queens is one of the best counties in all of America, so people do wanna live here. And so it is a worthwhile project to prove. And let me just also, as I'm closing, drop this in your spirit, Mr. President. Being in Community Board Three, the African-American community not only faces affordable housing, but also face housing discrimination because, as Lisa could tell you, we as African-Americans have sold our houses and moved south. But unfortunately, those purchases are not worth rent to the African. Serious and sad indictment and I see that as nothing but discrimination and that needs to be looked into as well. But I am in support of innovation project. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you for your testimony.
Our next speaker is Jeff Sitomer. Please unmute yourself and begin your testimony. Followed by Renzo Ramirez, Jennifer Bush. Jeff Sitomer, are you there? You must accept your panelist's promotion. Renzo Ramirez has accepted. Renzo Ramirez has accepted. Please accept your panelist's promotion. Jennifer Bush. Okay, we'll begin with Renzo Ramirez. Please unmute yourself and begin your testimony.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, Mr. Ramirez.
Great, great. Well, good afternoon, uh, Borough President Ri- yeah, good afternoon, Borough President Richards. My name is Renzo Ramirez, and I am a member of Thirty-two B J. As you know, Thirty-two B J is the largest property service union, representing eighty-five thousand property service workers across the city. We maintain, clean, and provide security services in buildings like the one being discussed at Innovation Queens. We estimate that disrezoning, which will allow the construction of approximately twenty-eight hundred residential units, including over seven hundred affordable units, along with community, retail, and will lead to the creation of at least fifty new building service jobs. The commitment to good, permanent jobs in this project is clear. In examining the impact of this project, we hope that your office will consider how it will affect building service workers. We believe any investigation of a project like this should consider whether the development will sustain wage standards in the building service industry. This project clearly does that. The new, the new parks-based sustainability measures proposed in this project will also benefit Thirty-two B J members and their families. The best way to make sure that the development like the one proposed have a positive impact on building service workers is for developers to make a formal commitment to paying the prevailing wage and creating good jobs with family sustaining wages and benefits. We are pleased to let you know that the developers affiliated with this project, Silverstein Properties, have made an early commitment to creating prevailing wage building service jobs at this site. We are in full support of this project. This rezoning is a chance for working families to benefit from development and to uphold and promote the strong standards that are in place for good building service jobs in New York City. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Our next speaker, Lauren Ashcroft, followed by George Stamatiades and Ella Hartley. Please accept your promotion to panelist. Lauren, you may begin. Lauren, please unmute your microphone.
I froze.
Oh my God, no.
Uh, you're unmuted. Thing Lauren, Lauren going first?
Lauren Ashcroft, we can hear. Please begin.
Oh. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, we're having a little technical difficulties. Um, I just wanted to thank you for having us here today to listen to the community, uh, President Richards. Um, I am six months pregnant myself and have already been pushed out of two neighborhoods because of rising rent prices. I am devastated, um, that I have to keep moving because of new development and gentrification everywhere I go. Um, and also, given the light of all the decisions that our government has been making on our behalf in the last weeks, um, I am extremely emotional at the constant message that the voice of us, the people in the community. Um, as a woman, my rights have been taken away within the last week. I'm also scared about the incoming increase in concealed weapons that will come to New York. And all I really want is a safe, affordable place to have my baby and to keep her here. I think it's disingenuous to say that this particular project is the only way to bring jobs to our neighborhood. Um, to have a baby in a matter of months. We have been begging for a birthing center in Western Queens forever. Um, that's one example of something that would be extremely beneficial to our community, but something that's seventy-five percent unaffordable for our community, that will set the precedent of what, how our rent will continue to rise in Astoria and keep pushing people like me out of my apartment. That's something that will continue to hurt the people who voted for you, and I, I voted for you for our President Richards, and I, I'm relying on you to protect us and to let me stay in my home. So, um, thank you so much again for having us. Um, I did take, uh, from nine-thirty A M to, to, to right now, out of my hourly paid job. Um, a lot of us are here losing money to be able to speak with you today. Um, and I will note that a lot of people that are in favor of this project are doing it and are here as part of their job, getting paid to be here. So, um, just take that into account whenever you make your decision. Um, I really will respect and appreciate if you prioritize the voices of people who live here and the voice of the community board who voted against this project that will harm us. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is George Stamatiades. Please unmute yourself and begin your testimony. George.
Unmute yourself.
Unmute.
Muted. George, you still muted? I think he clicked himself off.
Oh, oh.
He's, he's the reason I'm tired. I think I was at his fireworks show too late last night. George, you're muted.
I'm unmuted, okay.
Here you go. We're gonna forgive you since you had that big, like, fireworks show last night.
Oh, thank you and thank you. Okay, my wife and I moved into the Dutch Kills community in nineteen seventy-three. During that time, we had to deal with the Army Pictorial Center that was nothing more than a pile of junk, garbage strewn all over the street, the buildings were broken into. Because of the foresight of Mr. Kaufman, that project now has become a great place for jobs, and it also created the Thirty-Fifth Avenue and Thirty-Fourth Avenue commercial strips that also brought small businesses and many jobs along with it. Our community fought for fifteen years to get out from underneath the yoke of the M-one designation manufacturing, and we were able to get a mixed use for more housing. Housing is critical. Progress is what made our community great. Progress will make our community get even greater. This prod, project promises to do that. It will create businesses, it will create jobs, and it certainly will cremate, create a continued growth in our community. Um, I'm not concerned about billionaires making more money. If it wasn't for them, none of us or many of us probably wouldn't have the jobs we have. We all have an opportunity to become billionaires. All we gotta do is work at it. And I'm, and, and almost closing, I just wanna quote Abraham Lincoln, when he said, "You cannot build yourself up by tearing somebody else down." If they believed in our community to be the place to invest in this type of project, it's good for everybody, and all the little other flakes will work themselves out. Everything will work. We're in a partnership. They grow, we grow. And that's the way it should always be. We are not adversaries. We are discussionists. We will discuss for a better tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Our next, our next group of speakers are as follows. Ella Hartley, followed by a dial-in from Jimmy Penya, and Tony Barsamian also dialing in. And Ella Hartley. Please, please begin. Is Ella promoted? Jimmy Penya? On the dial-in, on the phone, please, um, release your call.
Hello?
Oh, there he is.
Yeah, how are you?
Fine, thank you. Please identify yourself for the record and begin your testimony. Did we lose him?
We might have. We can move on, and if they come back on, we'll, we'll hear from you. It's an entrance of time.
Okay, Tony Barsamian also dialing in.
All right, I'm not dialing in. I'm actually, uh, on the computer. Can you see me?
Yep, we see.
Good. And this is very important. I really believe that we haven't said enough about the impact on our street, Steinway Street. I happen to be the chairman of the Steinway Street, Steinway Astoria Partnership. And as a business improvement district, it is crucial to us to have businesses thrive and survive, now survive since COVID. We need very much to have the Innovation Queens go forward, because we believe that it will bring a lot of people to Steinway Street. We are hoping that this two billion dollar investment will improve the entire area by bringing a lot of people, making Steinway Street more accessible and more fun and more things to do, so that people will shop and dine and walk around and enjoy. Astoria is a great place, there's no question. Everybody loves Astoria, we know that. Steinway Street has been a famous street for a million years, not really, but many years. But we are in trouble. I cannot stress it enough. You don't need me to show you proof. Walk down the street. You'll see many empty stores. We need help. And the best thing that I've seen in the last five years, and especially since COVID, the last three years, is this promotion of happening before our eyes right now. We think this will bring people to the street. It will bring shoppers. We do not believe that it will negatively impact the Steinway Street businesses that are there. The Steinway bid has endorsed and has worked very closely with this project, because we know it will have a positive impact on the stores. The mom-and-pop stores, as well as the big chain stores, all the stores in the area. That's also going to be very important to preserve these stores that are struggling. Yes, we know that everybody uses Amazon and goes to shops online, but we need to keep Steinway Street vibrant by being able to promote the merchants that are there. And we believe bringing in this development will bring people to the community, which will find it to be a comfortable, enjoyable, fun place to shop and dine and walk around. I encourage people to think about it from the point of view of the local businesses. Local businesses have been the backbone of our economy for hundreds of years in New York City. We need this now. We need this more than ever, and I'm pleading with people. I hear everyone's concerns. I'm not closing my eyes or ears. Your criticisms and comments are all worth listening to and taking into account. But we cannot let this falter, because if it does, I'm afraid we're gonna lose many, many more of our stores on Steinway Street. Please work with us on this. Thank you, Borough President, and thank you for being at the concert last night with the fireworks right here in Astoria.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Before we move on, I'd like to invite anyone who has registered to speak and has not spoken yet to, please raise your hand and let us know that you are in, in place, and we will send you a promotion to panelist. Um, there are many people we see listed. Our next speaker, who is on to speak and bring testimony, please unmute yourself, James Bassey.
Oh, hello.
Hello.
Long, long meeting, uh, which is good. Thank you, First Borough President, for hearing me today. Uh, I just gonna lay out a few things. This is nothing but a gentrification scheme. It'll only line the pockets of the developers and drive out working-class people and people of color. I must correct, a false claim made by the team early this morning, saying the zoning precedent for this proposal is in scale with other area developments. That's a brazen lie. This proposal is disproportionately out of scale, unprecedented, and monstrous in its scale and implications. Furthermore, the developers at town meetings consistently have stonewalled, stonewalled our community requests for clear facts and granular explanations. They've continued to engender mistrust in our community, and unlike what Ms. Kipun said from Kaufman Astoria, that is not about to change. A few other troubling points before I go. We don't need acres of bloody open space. We need deeply affordable housing. Deeply is below the thirty percent. Developers should be held to, held to at least fifty percent deeply. That's underlying deeply affordable housing as a binding condition for rezoning. But I guarantee you, that's not gonna happen. They'll stick to their bare, bare minimum. Just, I'll put money on it. They have not offered any real data on the so-called seventeen hundred permanent jobs. Talk is cheap. I've said it before, I'll say it again. Um, I wanna know about the union, more about the union workers. The phrase, "It will include union workers"? What about percentages? Why don't you just say, "We'll hire all union workers"? I don't think it's gonna happen either. What happened to the proposed creation of the school that was taken off the table? No one has been able to answer that question, and I would love an answer about that. One last thing. The scale of this project is completely unsustainable regarding to infrastructure, environment, transit, transit, and traffic density. If we let them build this monstrosity once, it could happen again and again. Please don't let them invoke no one Innovation Queens. I'm very grateful to everyone for letting me speak today. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony, James.
Um, the next order will be, um, Reverend Corwin Mason, followed by Reverend Patrick Young. Reverend Young, please accept your, your panelist's promotion. Reverend Mason, you may begin your testimony.
Yes, good afternoon, Queensborough President Donovan Richards and to all. I am the, uh, senior pastor of the Community Church of Astoria, and I thank you for allowing me to speak today. As a advocate for my community, I'm always looking for projects that will be, truly bring affordable options to our residents. New affordable housing in Western Queens is not a desire, but rather a need. Many NYCHA residents are living in substandard conditions, where they are constantly overlooked and grossly undeserved. Affordable housing is incredibly limited, leaving many residents with nowhere out of the NYCHA cycle. I'm here today to express my support for Innovation Queens, while eight hundred new affordable units will not benefit every resident in need, but it's a glimpse of hope for thousands of Astoria residents seeking new affordable housing. I'm also excited about the innovation in business and workforce development that will be a very important part of this project. Community wealth building is vitally important in undeserved communities. I strongly believe that this project is a step in the right direction, right direction, working with reliable nonprofit partners. In addition to the affordable housing component, these community partnerships truly make this project worthwhile. Please accept this testimony as my support for rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Yes, sir.
All right, we now go to next, uh, Reverend Young.
Thank you, Borough President, and those who, who afford me this opportunity, I'm gonna share. I am part of the Queens Clergy Coalition, and I want to share that I'm pastor of First Baptist Church of East Elm Hurst. I have wonderful congregants who are part of, live in that, that community and also work in that community. I am extremely supportive of this wonderful project, Innovation Queens. I believe, as we talk about and wrestle with this issue of affordable housing, as you know, uh, it is a challenge, but it is an opportunity that we can be able to share and provide, uh, housing for people much needed in Queens. As you know, there's a major housing shortage, housing shortage, and this will be an opportunity to be able to provide that in this wonderful, uh, community. I know the challenge percentage, but I believe that we will work, and with you, your help, Borough President, I'm sure, we work sure, with your history of doing innovative projects, will make sure and ensure that this project will meet the needs of those in that community in a wonderful way. Also, I want to share that they have a long track record of being, uh, proven and committed to whatever, uh, they say they would do. And I believe that through you, Borough President, and through, uh, your office, this will be a opportunity and make sure, and make sure that this will be a one project that reflect the greatness of Queens and the wonderful way Queens does great work in our various communities. And so I truly and fully support this effort of this wonderful Innovation Queens project and believe, and believe it will be a good project for the community. Thank you for your time and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Reverend Young.
Our, our next speaker is Namoki Kans. Please unmute and begin your testimony.
Hi there, my name is Namoki Kans.
Hi there, my name is Nomi K. Kans, I'm an Astoria resident. I'm also an investigative reporter who has done quite a bit of research over the last 10 years around speculative markets, in particular how people lose their homes and are driven out of their communities that they've grown up in. And I can tell you right now, as an Astoria resident, we are living in a speculative market. We already had a crisis before the pandemic, an economic crisis, a crisis of wages, of housing security, infrastructure and education. Income inequality was already worse than it's been in history in New York City, which was the worst in the country. Post pandemic, it's even worse. In the last year alone, our rents have gone up in New York City 33% in one year. Small businesses left and right across Northwest Queens are shutting down. I just learned by going for breakfast at one of my favorite spots, Marzuka, that they are shutting down because they could not negotiate out of their rent increasing by over 50%. This is happening all over Northwest Queens, not to mention the stagnant wages and the inflation that we're all hitting. But we keep doing the same thing over and over. For the last 45 years, we keep giving out these major tax breaks to these big developers who promise a few gimmicks here and there. They say affordable housing, well, affordable to whom? I think many people have brought that up at this point. That affordable housing and the rent, the rents are being set by the market. But who is setting these market rates? The developers, they are the ones doing this. But we know how that affects communities. When you live in a speculative bubble, it doesn't just affect the people who are right around that development, but it affects the neighborhoods surrounding it. Small businesses suddenly can't afford to stay in business. People can no longer afford their rents. It's not just about this one development and the, the promises that have not been in writing, whether it's how many union jobs, what types of union jobs, how many people come from the community to serve those jobs, what the affordable housing is set at, which is definitely not enough. But it's the other promises. How many small businesses are actually going to be afford to be part of this project? Because as, as someone mentioned, they're worried about Steinway Street. Well, Steinway Street is already hurting. If consumers and if residents can't afford to visit those businesses and those businesses shut down, we no longer have a community. We can't start, we can't give out these big breaks to these developers who are only in it for the money. The gimmicks don't work, we've seen this all over the city. If you are about small businesses, then you would be afraid of this speculative bubble because your business will be at risk. If you are concerned about affordable housing, you would be looking at that empty housing stock. We have to take this on. The word is out, we have the research. This is about keeping New York alive.
Thank you for your testimony.
Our next speaker is Reverend Clark Hassan, followed by Nahid Akhtar. Please accept your promotion to panelist. Reverend Clark, please begin.
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon Borough President Donovan Richards. My name is Shonda Sutton, and I'm a resident of Queensbridge Houses. I've lived here all my life, and I'm speaking today in full support for Innovation Queens. And I'm, I'm excited about it because I think even though, you know, you hear everyone talking about all of the changes in affordable housing, and it's scary, change is scary, but change is also necessary. And I'm thinking as we continue to recover from the pandemic and some of the highest unemployment rates we've ever seen, this project is important because it's going to be providing so many new jobs and job opportunities in Astoria. In addition to the jobs, that will be a direct result of the Innovation Queens. This development is going to bring new businesses, and that's going to result in more job opportunities. So I ask that when you're considering this project for approval, please consider the thousands of residents who are still recovering from financial, recovering financially and seeking employment. And thank you for taking time to hear me today. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Our last registered panelists, I'm sorry, our last registered speaker, excuse me, Nahid Akhtar, please accept your panelist promotion so we can hear your testimony. Nahid Akhtar, you may submit your, your testimony to our office at vgarvey@queensbp.org. Borough President, that concludes our, our registered speakers as well as those who have responded to our request to speak.
Okay, any last speakers before we conclude this hearing? Any last individuals who wish to testify? All right, seeing none, I really want to thank my team. Thank you so much to Lisa, to Vicky, to Malik, to Deputy Borough President. Thank you all to Chief of Staff here, Michael Mallon. Solah, thank you so much. And of course, my Communication Director, Chris Barker, thank you so much for putting this hearing together. I want to end in closing and just saying, thank you to the general public for hanging in here and being real passionate about your community. I don't care where you're at on the spectrum, the bottom line is you showed up today, whether you support the project, whether you don't support the project. And that's what democracy is absolutely all about. I will end in just saying I, I've taken extensive notes on many of these issues and sort of have watched this process play out from afar. But today to hear directly from the community on specific needs was critical for me. And we now have work to do after the hearing concludes to make sure that the very things that the community has spoken about, especially the affordability, is something that is prioritized and taken into accountability. And it's something, whether I heard from you or not today, is something that is always important to me. But I want to thank you for your energy and passion and pushing to make sure that affordability is centered in this conversation. To the development team, you've heard the public, thank you for staying on too, because often sometimes I chaired the zoning committee and, you know, you would see applicants disappear after they finished their, their hearing.
Excuse me Borough President?
Yes.
There is a registered speaker who is on, her name is Jennifer Bush.
All right, she will go, she will have the penultimate word. But I, let me just wrap up because then we will close on after, close after her. But just, I really want to thank each and every one of you for testifying. The clock is ticking here now, we are getting to work. And we're not, we're not new to this, I'm not a beginner to this process. Come through many of these battles, and I hope at the end of the day, we can arrive in a place that helps the community to build in a way that ensures that local residents are centered through this process as well. So we'll be working hard and God willing, we'll arrive there. But if not, it won't be for us not trying. So I want to thank each and every one of you for attending today. With that being said, I'm now going to turn it over to the Jennifer I'm seeing.
Yes, and I, I did not intend to be the person who had the final say. So that makes me a little nervous.
And I was like, wait. Okay.
But anyway, thank you very much because I, I had to jump off for a meeting and I missed my earlier call, my calling to come. So my name is Jennifer Bush, I'm the Director of Client Partnerships for Eventscape for a small business, an architectural fabrication company located in Long Island City. And I just want to say that, you know, we employ a team of artisans and craftspeople. And for us, the affordable housing issue as a small business employer is very important. We are actively hiring, we want to hire from our community, we want our current employees, and we want the people that we want to hire to be from the community. So we're for anything that helps expand affordable housing. So the types of people that we want to hire actually have an opportunity to live nearby where they work. And I do believe that the Innovation Queens project has been relatively sincere in its efforts to try to integrate affordable housing into, into the mix. The other thing I wanted to say was, you know, my company, we exist kind of at the, the intersection between construction and design. And so we are in the construction industry, we're not aligned in any way with this particular project. But I do want to say that construction jobs are really good jobs. And the, the project, the development in question is going to provide a lot of really good, solid, well-paying jobs for local community members. So, you know, I've heard a lot of commentary about the unfortunate levels of poverty in this neighborhood, but I'm looking at it from the other perspective of giving some of these people who are living in poverty opportunities to raise themselves up out of that condition. And then the last thing I want to say is just a little bit inspirational or aspirational, but, you know, I know I've heard a lot of people say things about they want to live in the community that they grew up in, and they want their kids to be raised in the kind of community that they grew up in. But the fact of the matter is, I don't believe any of us are really going to be able to live in the kind of community that we grew up in because the world just continues to change. So it's hard to always hang on to that level of nostalgia. But you know, when you think about seeing a development like this go up for a kid who's living in a neighborhood and is experiencing poverty, maybe they're going to look at this, at this project, and they're going to say, you know what, look at what's happening to my community, look at that, that development that's happening in my community. People are investing in my community, and how do I in my life become, you know, invest in that type of activity? So maybe it'll inspire some kids to want to be developers. Maybe it'll inspire some kids to want to be architects, to design, to see how they can transform their communities in a positive way. So that's all I wanted to say. I think it's hard for us to just always hang on to nostalgia and I think we have to move forward, and I think Innovation Queens is sincere in its effort to move this community forward.
All righty, thank you so much. And with that being said.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Nahid has re, has returned. Nahid Akhtar, followed by, I forgot the name, sorry.
Matthew Chen.
Matthew Chen and Mason Van Geesen, in that order.
And after this, we're concluding this hearing. So Nahid. Matthew and then Mason. Nahid. Please unmute. Nahid Akhtar. Nahid? Okay, all right, we'll go to Matthew Chen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Great, thanks for the opportunity. I had to jump off for, to go back to work, so grateful to be able to speak at this. I'm a resident of Astoria, I'd like to speak against the Queens Innovation Project. Think projects like this are going to fundamentally make it more expensive to live in Astoria. And I believe with 75% of their units being brought in as market rate-luxuried amenity apartments, you'll not only be injecting the neighborhood with an influx of high-income folks, but also increasing the incentive for speculative development in the area. My rent went up 10% this year, and I did not get a 10% raise this year. This project, I think, is going to accelerate gentrification in the area, give landlords and businesses incentives to raise prices that cater to a higher income demographic and push people like myself out of the neighborhood. I know Queens Innovation likes to sell itself on the community benefits it will bring to the neighborhood with public-private spaces and a handful of incentives for nonprofits. But I think fundamentally corporations like this have a primary goal of making money, and they're not primarily focused on addressing the affordable housing prices in the neighborhood or in, in New York. I think this is incredibly evident by the fact that they're providing, I believe it's only 25% of units as affordable housing, when that's the minimum needed, if I understand the system correctly, to get a tax exemption. They're only doing the bare minimum to serve their own interests. This project, to me, feels like an encroachment of Long Island City and the style of development that's sprung up there. It looks like the buildings of Long Island City, as well as the luxury buildings in Williamsburg or Dumbo, neighborhoods that when I walk around, I get the direct feeling that these neighborhoods are not for me. I see, they make the argument that they're adding to the, to the supply of housing in the market, but as far as I can tell, there's no real empirical evidence that projects like these, luxury projects like these lead to any kind of decrease in the cost of living for the surrounding residents. And so for those reasons, I would encourage you to reject this proposal and yeah, reject Innovation Queens. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I think we had Mason. And.
Hi there, yeah, that's me. I also live in Astoria, I'm a young professional, I'm an artist. And I'm urging you all to vote against Innovation Queens. I mean, I'm sure you've already heard this time and time again today, but it's because we believe it here in the community, which is that this development would both directly displace real families and small businesses who belong at the heart of our community, and it was also indirectly displaced many more, including people just like me. I just, I can't express to you how worried I am that an influx of these sort of market-rate luxury apartments, like the one, ones proposed for Innovation Queens, are going to raise rents and property taxes for the rest of us, which is going to price out people like me and my neighbors quickly. And that's really scary, right? You know, we're the people who already call Astoria home, we're the people who make this place thrive. Apartments in Innovation Queens would be prohibitively expensive for most of the people who live here. And the sort of bare minimum affordable units that they're offering would still be out of reach for the people who need them the most. Like my household includes two working adults, and we would not be able to qualify for the affordable units. You know, we're your neighbors and your community. The billionaire developers who are behind Innovation Queens are not. We have our own best interests at heart, and so do they. And those don't align. You know, we know we have a housing crisis in New York, but it's an affordability crisis, right? Something that just really stuck with me was on May 16th, the Innovations Queen team replied to a tweet from the New York Housing Conference with the claim that, quote, "With a rental vacancy rate of just 2.8%, well under the citywide average 3.5%, Astoria needs more housing." However, the tweet from NYHC cited the real problem, which Innovation Queens really conveniently ignored, which is that we need, quote, "Affordable housing in every neighborhood." They're not doing that. And they've really ignored calls from the community that they need to do that in order for us to accept this development. I don't think the incomes of families here in our neighborhood are going to be able to keep up with the market rate rents and even the affordable income minimums. We can't keep up with that. I could go on length, about a million other reasons that the approval of Innovation Queens would be disastrous, right? The environmental impact statement, the racial impact statement. But I think that we can do so much better. We don't have to give up so much to settle for the crumbs that these developers are offering. So again, I urge you to vote no. Thank you so much.
Thank you Mason for your testimony. Once again, just want to reiterate, I really appreciate everybody who came out to testify today. Our next land use hearing, and if there are no, well, we finished all the public speakers now. So we will see you, the next land use hearing will be on July 21st, 2022, starting at 9:30 a.m. And, and once again, very happy to general public join. You can always follow what's happening in your neighborhood at queensbp.org, that's a quick plug, queensbp.org. You can sign up for our newsletter as well, which comes out every Friday with good information on what's happening around Borough Hall and what's happening around our Borough. With that being said, it is now 2:40. We've been here since 9:30, and I'm really appreciative of my phenomenal team once again in hanging in there and really taking public input seriously, whether we're on a Zoom or not. And I look forward to the work ahead with the applicant as, as this process moves forward. So thank you all for attending. God bless you. Please have a great Fourth of July.